Well, this is weird. It has me talking and I haven't got my... Yeah, I'm saying, okay, okay. And it said swear word and I'm like, I haven't said a word.
So reading your thoughts?
It was very weird.
Reading your thoughts?
Well, that's a new kind of computer. Okay, we should be good.
We're good with captions, everything's?
Yeah.
Oh, okay then, alright. Okay. I make a motion open the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lake?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there any member that has a conflict with or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items for us this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
And I do not. Okay, so with that being said, with the clerk, please read the open meeting compliance certification.
Sure.
Or clips notes.
Clips notes. If you're joining us per Zoom, please, if you wish to ask a question on the board, you can put it in the Q and A and I'll be happy to ask the board, but if you prefer to ask it, please raise your hand. And if you're here or on Zoom, please provide your name and address unless protected by law. And then we'll just say, everybody be nice and pretty have person.
Okay, thank you. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. The integrity of our public will take its end best one nation under one law in the central government of our general.
Do we have any public comment this evening? Is there anybody online?
We do have someone online.
It's a comment.
But we won't this time.
Okay, alright, okay.
Mayor, if I may, I just thought of one board member comment. I had distributed an email before the meeting asking if we wanted to consider, in the interest of brevity and not opening another four hour meeting, I wondered if we wanted to consider kind of a blanket policy for 15 minutes for introductory topics from those outside of the board. At least as an experiment for this meeting. And if not, no big deal, just.
Oh, you mean like presentations? Yeah, I mean, I always thought that was a policy. And in fact, every place I've been, it's always been 10 minutes. You know, you have 10 minutes, so it could be more, you know, we had another.
Perhaps 10 minutes for the outside presenter, about five minutes of board discussion.
Yeah, that's pretty much what we did.
Yes, that'd be great.
So everyone understands, we have a very full agenda this evening and we're also on our summer hours, so we have one meeting a month. And so we kind of pack things in. So we, you know, the goal is to kind of keep things moving. Really, we're here to listen, to transact business on behalf of our village. And we just want to kind of keep things moving along because some of our meetings really become quite long. I think, what was our longest? Five hours?
Five hours.
Five hours, yeah. Yeah, that's a Guinness book.
So if we try that and it does work, maybe we consider adding it to the policy.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you. Thanks so much for bringing that up. That's wonderful. Is there a motion? Uh, I think we would probably want to, we have a policy that, didn't you get the?
We had the rules of procedure later.
Do we want to do that? And everything we've gathered?
Yeah, just to lay this out there, whatever's coming to say would be a policy where presentations by of new material from people who are not on the board would be limited to 10 minutes followed by board discussion.
For five, yes. 10 minute maximum.
Item. If we wish to extend, to allow the speaker to extend their time, to extend their time, that of course could be done with a board motion.
And I also, when we get to that other part of the procedures, since I have some other things I'm thinking. To in terms of time constraints, how we would address that.
Sure, I'm all for it.
Yeah, I think we all are.
Not a motion for now, just an experiment.
Yep.
I'm good.
Yeah, but it's one that's been really successful in other municipalities, so I thank you for bringing that up.
And Dr. K, you'll give a timer? Is that how that works?
Mm-hmm.
You'll give the timer?
Yes. You said it made time, I'm just very annoying when it went off, I think. We can, you and I, put a phone number and everything.
Thank you.
Yep. Typically how it's handled. Okay, with that being said, department reports, the building inspector. Hi Steve.
Hi Steve.
Hi.
So we have Steve's report. Is there any, are there any, everybody has had a chance to take a look? Is there any, are there any questions for Steve?
Steve, I have one. I'm interested in the old Bank of America property. I'm interested more about the old Bank of America property. You said you have planning zoning applications for that?
The, the, pardon my discussion too. The fire department is looking to rezone or split the property apart. There is no plan right now for the bank. They're not quite sure what they're going to do with it. So, but they have, they have now purchased the bank. The, they have the Waddams property and they're looking at splitting the Waddam property, giving an easement to the barns. There will always be access to move the fire truck. They're looking to remove the island and the parking lot and redoing the parking lot there to gain parking space because they have no use for the island. But at this point, they're thinking maybe offices for the, but it's up to the board. It's still in front of the board as far as what they're going to do.
I think they're working on it and I think they're just reaching out. I think if some of this stuff's conceptual in terms of the building and what they want to do.
But it was actually purchased?
Oh, yeah, that, yeah. And I brought that back to the board. I told the board that, I think it was last fall, when they purchased it. And they since painted the building, fixed up the outside, and we also have an Eagle Scout interested in doing a butterfly garden, pollinator garden along the plant or along the front of the building and working with the fire district. So, but I don't know, you know, anything that they're doing, they'll be bringing back to the board.
At this point, you're right, they're applying is for a site plan, minus plan three to move the island, you know, the drive through island and reconfigure parking lots so they have use of the whole parking lot.
They had submitted a request for subdivision. You had it this time?
Yes, they just did. Also just came in. It'll be in front of planning and zoning the next meeting.
Yeah, they just did it, yeah.
Which leads me to the next kind of portion of that. I don't know how the board feels about the fees for the fire department.
And when, be specific for us and for the record.
You've got a site plan fee, you've got a variance fee, you've got HBB fees. I mean, I.
And how much are the fees again?
Total will be around $500.
$500?
This is for the fire district?
And, and, and you're asking what?
The board would waive the fees for the fire district.
Well, they serve our community. I mean, I'm not opposed to that at all. You know, they protect us. Anybody else?
I think too, maybe we could put a cap on it. I don't know if there'll be consultants involved. We don't know yet without seeing the plan, what might be involved. So I think to a certain degree, yes, that we would be willing to waive the fee, but maybe we should think about maybe putting a cap on it. I don't know.
Just a comment here. My, my feedback would be that we waive any fee of any application that is ultimately approved by the boards that it is presented. So it's subsequent to the approval. That way you don't see multiple application after application of different sorts, where you're dealing with lots of work for projects that aren't ultimately approved. And so if they believe a project to be, I don't know which way this might go, and they want to submit it and it gets denied, then that will be on them. But ultimately, the approved projects are the applications we, we waive.
Normally, in the other communities I have worked in, they come to a fire district and like that, they usually is a, is a handshake deal. You know, I mean, because like you said, they serve the community as a volunteer group here, so.
If I may, I might want to talk about this at the next meeting if possible. I'd like to look over the laws again about whether or not they would be subject to a zoning and based on that make a determination. Seems like since they're a separate entity, there might be some questions about that. So if they are going through the process of actually applying, I would likely be interested in waiving the fees, however not the consulting fees as trustee Lanfair mentioned. I think the other thing that I'm keeping in mind here is that this is another property that's off of the tax rolls. And that's nothing to do with the fire department, just the fiscal reality of the fact that this property has changed hands to a non-taxpaying entity.
Yeah, for now, unless they choose to sell the property.
Right.
So, so we have application in front of us. Will you kind of put the fees on a hold down till you do a little more research?
Can we make a motion to accept an application with the deferral of a decision on an application fee?
I don't know that we can do that. I don't know that if that, Jeff's not going to be, he'll be here in 15 minutes. That's a question for our attorney. I don't know that we can do that.
Let's.
But actually, let me think about this because it's not, they're not residents. They serve our community and for the public good.
But let me, just on my side, do they pay taxes? Do you pay taxes to the fire district? Do they put a tax? So actually, you're saving the burden on your taxpayers, so they're paying to come, they pay you and then now they're paying for the fire district. So, really, I mean.
Just redirecting where the work's getting done is all I'm saying.
I'm just saying, you know, your taxpayers are paying twice. So why should we take more funds from taxpayers?
Yeah, that's an interesting point too.
Okay, I'd be okay with waiving the $500 fees, but not any consulting fees that are.
We can at least start with that and then you can come back.
That's the application fee. If any consultant, they should pay for any outside consultant.
Yes, I agree.
Do we want to just waive application fees if any subsequent applications receive up to a $500 cap? Let's, let's take it on a case by case basis. I don't think we have to quote anything that's not. So then what's the current application? What's the current cost of that application?
I, I, exactly, it's around $500 between all three different things we're looking.
Well, I'm fine with that for the first three applications coming in. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, we can start with that and then, and then bring it back to the board and then meanwhile, we can do some research, speak with our attorney, but, you know.
Would we make a motion to waive fees for the current application?
Is there a motion?
So moved as the building inspector suggested.
My second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lake?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, I am number two, fire department. They have now obtained the funding and a contract to do Copper Beach Park across the street where Charlie and Harley had sex.
You mean the village?
No, that's, that's the town.
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 Well, it's both. It's both. Somehow the fire district is also involved in it too. Paul, Paul Schenkel's.
No, but Paul Schenkel works for the town.
I know, but somehow he said, moving, somehow I have a letter here from the fire department for allowing him to move over here on the Waddams property.
Oh, no, that's the Harley Day Hots. Because they're going to do the park, we permitted Harley Day Hots. What they, what they'd like to do would be, because they're going to be building.
Move Charlie across the street.
Yeah, like, yeah.
Back to the Waddams property while Copper Beach Park is being constructed. So when they're proposing, the fire department has allowed permission to bring Charlie over here into the driveway and the Waddams house during the construction of Copper Beach Park.
So basically, all this is, if I'm understanding this, is that, you know, we granted the permit for him to be there.
Yes, so.
Now they're doing construction.
Yes.
Why wouldn't we have him come back and be permitted when the fire district is saying, we, here's the letter.
Yes, we've allowed, given his permission for him to plow on the driveway.
Yeah, I'd like, if I could finish my thought just for one second, because I just speak very briefly with Paul about this, very briefly, he mentioned it. And I, my understanding too was that Charlie was thinking, well, if you're under construction, maybe I'll close out early. You know, he may not even be there that long.
Either way.
It just was the option if he were going to stay because of all the construction going on across the street. He's thinking, maybe it's not really viable for him. But I think what the fire district was trying to do is they recognized that he, he's always here for a certain number of months and so you can move across the street. I think it's nothing more than that.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure when they're going to be able to start. I think early he wants to react to movement. If they're not starting until into the fall, he may cut out a long term.
So what actually are you looking for? A motion to enable him to move across?
Can we amend?
Would it, yeah, amendment.
Just amend the prior permit?
Yeah, would be an amendment to the permit, wouldn't it?
Yes, because it would, the permit goes with the piece of property that it was, that that's part of the permit is give the location. So we want to.
Amend a new location.
I think maybe a new permit, but we waive the fee.
Right.
Yeah.
I can, I will get a.
Just bring it back, you know, okay?
Okay.
Then it's cleaner that way.
Yeah.
You know, so I think it's cleaner that way.
Do we need, we don't need a public hearing?
Yes, we will. If it's going to be a new application.
He's got time, right?
On an amendment.
When are they going to do the work over at the town across the street?
I'm not quite sure yet. They're hoping sometime late in the summer, but.
Okay, so we.
So we can come back to us.
Well, let's figure this out.
If the board's okay, I can go ahead and schedule a public hearing. We have a second meeting, which is in July.
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
But this goes to the thing I put in my email to the board. We're scheduled for July 9th for our next meeting. That meeting date is not going to work for the office due to the holiday. In that week, if you recall, I'm going to be at.
16, okay.
I was requesting the 16th for next village board meeting, but the board isn't in agreement.
Okay, so that would be the date?
That would be the date. So.
So that's going to be the motion. And the, and the time certain would be what?
We're going with six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Now, why are you going with six o'clock?
Because we decided that last time.
For public hearings.
For public hearings.
Oh, this is public hearing, but you're changing a whole trustee meeting, correct?
To July 16th.
At 5:00, but the public hearing is at 6:00.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to bring to a public hearing, a change in the permit and updating it to the Holiday Hots can opt over across the street and will.
Waddam.
Waddams house for July 16th at 6:00 P.M.
My second.
At 19 North Main.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lake?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
What else? You're busy tonight, Steve. Oh, Lily had a question. I'm so sorry. She had her hand up. I apologize. Thank you.
Could you give us a few more details on the proposed expansion of the abode building? Are they going to require any variances or?
Yes, they will, they will require a second bank variance. I think that really they'll require a new site plan. It alleviates a problem down there with the dumpster enclosure that the residents have had an issue with for years. They're going to take, proposing to take the dumpster enclosure and put it around behind lumber. And kind of the rumor that the abode can't expand, they're going to move.
So that's an expansion of the existing business?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. And the other was a tenant change at Drive Monroe that's continuing to be retail?
Yes.
Okay. And then on Rand Place Extension, where is the gas line being proposed? Is it where the work was recently done?
There will be a brand new main line run from Main Street all the way to Jefferson and the whole Rand Extension. They, right now, I think they were saying three weeks will be the spot. So somewhere at the end of this month is a proposed start of that. They still, we want to verify notification to all residents. And then they will, they are going to coordinate with their residents because obviously they got to cut over everybody onto the new line.
So the, the proposed line is going to be disruptive to their driveway aprons or just the street or how much disruption?
They're all under the driveways. Those are all under the driveways. No road. They're proposing no road disturbance. Everything will be in the law.
For closure, okay. And how does that affect all the work that was done fairly recently?
None, should not affect.
Bypasses that?
Yes.
Okay. So Scott Harv is been involved in that and overseeing that as well. He'll be part of that. Zach, you've been involved in the meetings too. Is there anything you'd like to add?
They're only going out a few feet, so they're really not going to disturb or open up any other facilities. So it's just a gas line and speeding one, a few people.
That's a good thing. They're getting a new line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and we've got down to pay for Scott to go through a map when we find him.
Yeah, we get a little bit of math in if we can, yeah. Yeah, which is very good.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? You're good?
About that.
Okay.
I just had one question, which is rental permitting. How's that going? Have you started that?
We've, we've compiled a list of more than I thought. And they're really, I'm, I'm up in the 90s. You know, I mean, so I compiled this, gave it to Alexandra.
We're working on it.
She's working on magic. They made a chart. I composed a letter that will allow to all the homeowners. And what I did is I basically went through every resident and if the address of the owner was different, then the physical address of the property will sign on the level. We don't know, you know, someone may not be, some may be still there.
Have we finalized the application yet?
Yes.
We're working on that. It's in draft.
Couple of new tweets.
Okay, so we haven't finalized?
Yeah, no, 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 not yet. It's in draft.
Yeah, it's internal. I did put advocacy on there and some other, you know, little things that we, we don't talk about.
They'll probably be on the next meeting.
Yeah, short term versus long term, things like that.
Okay, great. Perfect, thank you.
Great, great. Anything else for Steve? Busy.
We're busy. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next up, DPW. Zach, hi.
Hi. Do we, because we have a full house of stuff on the agenda to move my report toward the, I'm not going to be here till the end of the year.
You're okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm not with that. I think I'm here for a piece and I'll be out.
Okay.
That's very generous.
No, thank you, because there's a lot, a lot going on tonight, everybody, so.
Hopefully you'll be alone with that.
Maybe I.
I know. So, so with that being said, do you want to?
Well, if my counterparty's doing that, I'll be happy to be moved because I am here to.
You are here to the bitter end. I know. She turns off the lights actually, so she's definitely here to the end.
To the department.
Okay, so, well, thank you, thank you, everybody there. So why don't we start with our agenda items? The Frog House, Vernal Ponds. Yippee. Do we, is there a power point with this?
I'm not that I would need work.
Oh, I see, I saw that. I wasn't sure.
No, no, it's very simple.
Here, do we need a chair for you?
I just need to remind myself.
Get her a chair.
That's the lawyer's chair. I'll take that.
No, it's all with you. Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
I just wanted to remind as well that given the number of agenda items that we have on the.
I was just going to do that.
Yeah.
We're, we're looking, if possible, please stay to around 10 minutes with, so we can have five minutes per board discussion to.
Okay, I hope it will be five minutes.
Oh, five's even better.
Yeah.
Wow. So you know what? You hop to it. Have to say it.
Okay, so the first thing is that you all got a copy of the plan that Tom Bondic Houser made for us. And we had a really wonderful time on the 18th and 19th. And it was just really a great time. And he was very proud of the plan. So you all have that. The only thing I really want is to ask if you want him to come back and give a presentation to the general public, which we could arrange to have either co-sponsor, but the village can have it here, or if you, we could have it over at the library or a place like that. But the dates, I would like Justin to be here for, just for fun.
Sure, yes.
September 24th, November 12th, and December 10th are the three dates that he was available when he wrote this letter. So does one of those sound really appealing to you?
What was the November date again?
10th, 12th, I'm sorry.
It's my birthday.
So November.
Does that mean that you will be here or will be here?
That's a good question. Spend the day a week.
So, November 10th?
Yeah.
September.
September 24th.
September 24th.
November 12th and December 10th. So I guess he's busy in October.
So September 24th is a board meeting?
Ooh, you could do that.
Yeah. Actually, it's probably all the board meetings.
How about September 24th at the board meeting?
Yeah, we could do that.
His presentation might be more than 10 minutes.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah, I think it could be public.
And it's also for the public, you know, like, I'd like, we'd love to have as many people, you know, there.
Is it, the board meeting is supposed to go like from 5:00 to 7:00, right?
Oh, we would.
That sounds beautiful.
That's what we're striving for tonight.
We could do 5:00 to 7:00 and have a 7:00 presentation, separate and distinct.
Oh, let's do a hard stop.
Yeah. Try that.
That'll, that'll hurt the cast.
7:00 P.M. on the 24th.
September 24th at 7:00 P.M.
We were.
So you guys have to be done by 7:00.
Well, hang on one second, please. We have our.
Before the board agrees and act to be money, I heard co-sponsor, what is involved with co-sponsor?
That's true too.
That was my next question.
Yep.
Okay, it just means that hopefully Dr. King will help with the equipment. And that's all.
Oh, okay.
It is all paid for, so.
Okay, so we were, we were politely asking, do we have to cough up money? Okay. Okay, okay.
I would see this as, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. K, but we, we allow the public to come and use this space.
No, no, that's fine. No problem. We're co-sponsoring. That's absolutely, village services are valid. I just didn't know if there was a cost to having you do a presentation.
Ah, yeah, no, I wouldn't.
Nope, that's on a broadcast.
Okay, okay.
I wouldn't necessarily call it a co-sponsoring relationship for a lot of these issues.
We're hosting?
Yeah.
If we are hosting, that allows staff to do the work.
As we're specifically saying it, so we can help her with.
Say that.
Yeah, that's, so I think that's a really good thing and I'd like to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So much like we do with workshops, could we, because we'll all be here and we'll want to talk about it probably, or we could. I mean, do we simply want to call it a workshop and have it be a board meeting workshops specific to this or no? Personally, I wouldn't. I would rather it be a public.
This presentation.
Let's just be a public event.
Sounds good, alright.
Yeah, because you're doing everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So 7:00 P.M. on the 24th?
Yeah. Wonderful, thank you.
Great.
Okay, so my, the plan was is that a Frog House has been doing events for our mission and advocacy, collaboration and education. And I've been doing a lot of that for five years, but I really want something to happen. And, and so it was my plan that I would raise, that a Frog House, Frog House is me, but don't tell anybody. I've got lots of volunteers who disappear as soon as the events are over. Anyway, I was planning on raising the money for the Vernal Ponds. There are $8,000 per pond. And I have some friends who know about those things. And it's, it would be a whole new hat for me because I don't know how to ask for it done for anything. You know, I've just been giving myself and all my money to, to a Frog House and.
So you can pull together, some people can help organize that and.
I think so. I mean, if I have a goal in mind and I say, okay, this has to be done, then if I raise 8,000, I mean, we could have one pond if we, if I were 16,000 June and 24,000 three.
And I'm thinking too, you know, maybe we can involve the scout troops as well.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because it could be either Eagle Scouts or just even from, in terms of community projects that the scouts like to do.
Right.
That could be really kind of great. Maybe even the Rotary, maybe the Rotary can.
Well, I think this, I mean, he's always done it when he, when he goes into a place. He's done it around, say, the Frog State, which is when I like to aim for, which is April 28th, 2025. And let's say in one day, he gets 50 people coming in and people fly in. I nearly went to Indiana last year to do it in Indiana. It didn't work out as it turned out. But anyway, it is a community project and people come and then he knows what he's doing. So he can supervise. But, so what I'm asking the board right now, to be clear, is if it would be easier for me to start raising money for this if the board said, yes, we want to do it in April of '25. If, if I said, if I said, well, maybe the board will approve it after September 24th, but I'd like to start raising the money now, that would be a little awkward. I could wait till September 24th to do the fundraising. We're going to have a gala in, on November 8th and so on.
Yeah, we're just trying to think of time. You know, the time here. So.
Oh, okay.
So, no, we get the, so the ask is, do we all think we would like to have a Vernal Pond?
Or two or three.
Or two or three, depending on the funds that are being raised.
Correct.
Okay, in, in the arboretum?
Yes.
Okay.
At the designated spots.
At the areas when he came, which one we all walked through and saw.
And, well, we're done.
I thought it was kind of great, you know. I'm, I'm pro-Vernal Pond.
And the understanding is that you wouldn't raise all the funds and you're not asking the village board for any money? Is that correct?
If you want to contribute, you can, but.
No, but it's just, it's coming from the community fundraising to, to make this happen.
It would be a gift. I mean, I've been a diocesan, so I want you to put up a little light since Morgen.
We would.
We might, we might.
There we go.
We would definitely do that.
Okay, Lily has a question.
Two, two, actually. I want to clarify that we're, we're not voting as a board this evening, whether we are accepting the, this, um, program or not. We're, we're in the, we're still in the stage where we're contemplating. So we can, I give a commitment verbal or otherwise at this, at this time.
The only way the pond would happen is my understanding is if the money is raised to put one in by the community.
Right, but I can't say I'm raising money, so maybe put in a pond.
Well, I see where you're going. In other words.
You need a purpose for your fundraising.
Yeah, you can't, and you're right, it's not fair to ask people for money that.
It'd be like for what?
For something that may or may not happen.
Right.
I, I, I see where you're going with that.
So you're asking for, that's, I'm just trying to clarify, so you're asking for a vote?
So this, this may be premature, and I could even ask Tom if he could come earlier, so if you need more information, but it's all on the plan.
I saw that, one of the questions I had was regarding the heavy equipment. And one of the things that it said was that the heavy equipment required road surface in order to access the area for the excavation. That was what I read in the packet, so we, we can't provide that.
So it's a back home kind of situation?
It was a very large piece of equipment, and it was describing the process, and it said that this, this piece of equipment was required to do the excavation. I see a hand up in the back out of the corner of my eye, and I'm sure you'd be able to answer the question.
Just one minute, because I want Zach to, Zach, you were on that wall, weren't you on the wall?
Yes.
Okay, and there was some discussion about that and how that would happen and the digging, because how, the Vernal Ponds are not that deep.
Yeah, they're.
Eight, 10, 16.
Right.
So.
So we can explore options of borrowing or getting assistance from the town, or raising a piece of equipment to do so.
Some of the towns help support the project.
There are options that we can explore.
Okay, so you're saying we have some options?
Yeah, nothing is accessible too, so it's not like we have.
It is accessible.
They're cut, anything to get access to where these ponds are going to be, everything's pretty wide open.
Okay, well, if, if the board is considering a, a vote of commitment this evening, I, I'm going to bank the board's indulgence, I'm going to need more time. There's a lot that I want to find out.
Sure.
Okay.
Should I answer a question? Would this have to go to a public hearing?
Well, I think those are, that's a very good question. Um, you know, when, when I was thinking about this project, it seems that it's, it's something quite fixed. Um, you know, even with the, the trails we've discussed, which might require something like site plan, they can always be moved. Whereas a pond, once you've established a wetland, I believe would never be moved. Um, and so, you know, well, this is a, a very nice gift, and I, I think ecologically has a lot of benefits. Um, I certainly wouldn't be prepared to vote on it tonight, and I, I think the board would have to have a specific proposal, whether it's one pond, two ponds, and then consider, talk to our attorney about if we're going to go through site plan, and if it's part of other plans as well, whoever.
Uh, in terms of you can't move it, but you can always fill it in. I mean, wetlands have been drained forever.
That would be a question for our attorney, but I don't think that you can fill it in.
Yep.
Yeah, and 90% of all wetlands in the United States have been drained or filled in, so.
I'd love to talk to our attorney about that one.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, your comments.
Yeah, duck in the back.
So I think Justin has a good point, which is just a simple question, for us to approve anything, there's got to be some sort of plan in front of us that's specific, and if this is it, then it should be presented through an application and talked to Steve, and then once we can say, yep, we approved, whether or not we hear from Tom in September, or we make a decision in advance of him coming, by having a formal application before some board, right, specific to just this, not some big overall Arboretum plan, but just specific to these.
Take a look at what that's.
So what, what I would suggest is, um, who would do this in talking to Steve to submit the application? It would actually be the village submitting an application to, probably the planning board, right?
It's our land.
Right, so I, I just think that simple step of having a submitted application that we submit, I'm okay saying have the village work towards submitting an application to the planning board, and then having it be complete, and then we can approve it potentially in advance of Tom moving forward, but I think that's part of the.
So would I make an application to Steve?
No, we would.
Why would we?
Because it's our land.
Couldn't the Arboretum group?
Yeah, couldn't the Arboretum?
Well, it could be coordinated, I mean, obviously, and we would all coordinate with Steve. I mean, I think this is solvable.
Yes, for sure.
Okay, so it's all, yeah, exactly, I think it's all solvable, and I think really, when there was the walkthrough with Tom, um, you know, there were areas identified, that would be part of whatever that plan would be to be submitted, because right now you have trustees that are going, sounds good, but where are they going? You know, so I think to show specifically on maps of the Arboretum where they would go.
Oh, that's in the.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss that page?
I'm.
I missed that page. I apologize for that. But, but, but I'm saying as part of the application.
Right.
That's formalizing the process is really where you're going with this.
Yeah, could we maybe, this would be my thought, in advance of our next meeting, have an application perhaps we put together by the Friends of the Arboretum and, you know, Margot, and then presented to us for review and approval, and then we, after, submit it to Steve, and then it goes to the planning board.
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, application number 5073, or which one?
Steve will help you with everything.
Yeah, okay. I'll solve that.
You'll tell me what application.
Steve, Steve knows the drill.
You'll tell me what application.
Yeah. Steve, Steve can help move on.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, not a problem. Yep, I see there's a hand up.
Robert Corby, Southern Washington Avenue, President of the Friends of the Arboretum. First of all, I just wanted to endorse this proposal. Margot has worked closely with us, this does fulfill the Arboretum's original mission to also be wildlife sanctuary. I just wanted to, and I, I would be happy to fill out an application with Margot that will specifically address the points you mentioned tonight. When the locations of the ponds were selected, they were selected so they're near the trails and viewable. If you walk through the Pro Pond Trail now, there are existing Vernal Ponds that are six, seven feet away from the trail. These things are only 16 to 18 inches deep, and they dry up later in the season. They usually only have water and enjoy the spring. Uh, we could, in some locations, if, if, if Steve feels it's appropriate, you could put in a garden rail or a barrier, and I don't think it's a huge hazard. The other thing, Tom, you wanted to utilize one of the knot weed areas, because he's only got a tarp down, there's a basin there. And based on everything else that we anticipate happening in that area, it would be a perfect area for a sunny Vernal Pond in that area. But there's three different types of Vernal Ponds, and the locations were all selected, so they're easily viewable from the trails.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for that. Um, okay.
Do we need a motion, or just?
Well, I think it's a direction back to you.
Okay.
You know, to, to.
Sounds great.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I think it's all really great, I mean, and I think we're all excited about it, but let's just do the process and make sure we're.
Right.
You know, dotting i's and crossing t's and helping along.
All of these steps will be then to review the application, agree that we like it.
Yeah.
And then move it forward.
Yeah.
Sounds good, okay.
Okay, terrific, and so I just ask that those things be put in the minutes, the planning and then.
Yeah, that's what always happens anyways, so we're all good.
Thanks, Margaret, thanks so much, okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Alrighty, hopping along. Um, okay, next up. Okay, next up, the NYSERTA Green Energy Project for Canal Villages. Is Ram here? Oh, hi. On up.
So.
Thank you, I'm being here today, I'm applying tonight.
Oh, we're trying to, in, in the interest of time, and this is something that we, we shared in the beginning of the meeting, Ram.
Yeah.
Um, is that we are, we would like presentations to be less than 10 minutes, abbreviated if possible, and then it will have, you know, a few minutes for questions from the board, because we have a full agenda tonight. But could you, could you please introduce yourself to the board and?
Well, I'm Ram Shabas, the president of Larson Engineers. So I joined the company, my first project was in the village way back. Going back in the seventies. So, just to bring memory up, we used to come to talk about a water plant, which was a softener, three softens, you were not on one, under county water authority.
Oh, my goodness.
So, this one has been very close to heart because of all the involvement. We do infrastructure work, this project, it mentions NYSERTA. You're very familiar with this agency that provides the funding for green sustainable measures, so.
Can, I just want to, can you talk about NYSERTA just for the public, so they understand that acronym, New York?
Yeah, so New York State Energy Research and Development Authority is what NYSERTA stands for. And essentially, all of us, when we buy power, it's a systems benefit charge. So right now, there is a fraction of money going to NYSERTA. Every year, the funds are collected, and they fund energy-related projects. Could be conservation, it could be generation. This whole concept started with the idea of improvements in the canal port facilities by Canal Corporation. So we were looking at it as a group of people which are here in business folks, that the, the, you know, has been designated to make improvements in the coming years for tourism and improving the facilities. And Canal Corporation, with the help of NIPA, which is New York State Power Authority, want to, they have desires to improve the facilities so they become attractive for people to come. And funding is more towards if those facilities are green infrastructure. So if you do things which are reducing the energy use, or you are basically using solar power for renewable power, instead of the conventional power source, which is not all 100% green, those are the kinds of elements of projects that are funded. It happens to be that Empire Street Development, which is a big, large agency of state of New York, every year, as, I mean, you probably, I'm sure, applied for a consolidating funding application, CFA.
Yeah, we're familiar.
So CFA is a program which just every year done, this time of the year, they're just having a meeting, and that's for facilities that you are going to apply through a common portal. But the application is for projects which deals with a lot of other agencies. In this case, this will be more waterfront properties, so there is a program that state has. So in my communications and the slides that I had previously provided, basically, it talks about that consolid, the application itself could be made to the agency, combined application, which is more targeted towards agencies that the, Canal Corporation itself has a program, they talked about it last week at the presentation, that the funds are available for sustainability, green things. So in this whole scenario, the village happens to have a very nice facility which people enjoy. How could that be improved using the new technology, the funding that the state and federal government has, to bring in some sustainability concepts of energy conservation, parking lots? There are some areas which parking lots of large facilities that have impervious surfaces create a lot of stormwater. So issues are related to the flooding, and can we do something about it? Looking at the future, while he's looking at very high temperatures, summertime. So there are, these are opportunities that we can do things at the park. And essentially, offer the businesses that are there and village facilities, basically, part of the solar power produced. It is not, you would say, there is no room here to put solar panels. So this is the new law which allows power to be produced by the power company's grid system, anywhere, wherever R G E is, and then they are basically a transmission and delivery company. So we have sites that are in other areas which are eligible for this. Some of the sites get bigger amount of grants, so the idea is you plan to have a remote system of solar, financed by the private company that will build it, finance it. What they need is commitment from the folks to buy that power as a power purchase agreement. And it's cheaper than what R G E power is, so you don't make any changes into your power supply. Every community, every per, one person has option to buy it from a third-party supplier, it doesn't have to be R G E. So in this case, the whole program that's supported by these grants is that now municipalities and churches and nonprofits could own a system and get the benefits of tax credits and incentives. Typically, nonprofits and municipalities don't pay taxes, so this was not allowed at that time, this is a couple of years ago. Now, it is, this program is proposed by, this is our federal program called Inflation Reduction Act, IRA. They all work together with these, but the funds come from federal government, the state, from state to the folks that are going to use it. So you are using the process to apply for these funds. And essentially, the funding of these projects is pretty much majority of it is powered by the state grants. So the presentation was, is the concept of the village going for solar power and offering the same to the shown place areas, shown place areas, all the businesses, to also be solar. So it, it could become a community, piece of the community that is all 100% powered by solar. But you make improvements in the facilities at that. Most of it would be related to energy and renewable energy and climate, yeah, please.
Thank you. So when you indicate the solar aspect, let's use Shane Place, where physically would it go? On the buildings, on each, is it an individual program? Or there's a large, you need a large grid of some sort?
It is not on any buildings in the village.
Okay, where would it be placed?
It would be on a location which is served by R G E, that's just to gas and electric, is the transmission and distribution company.
I see, so R G E would allow a private investor to build solar panels on, let's call it the R G E, we, we're not.
A remote site.
Right away.
It's a remote site.
Oh, somewhere like on a farm.
A remote site.
Got it, yeah, got it.
It's, we are basically looking for contaminated sites, sites which are closed, landfills or stuff which not going to be good for agriculture or bill, and there are sites available located on R G E. And the private sector will make the land acquisition related.
I think.
But they don't start this whole process or applying for grants unless they know that this power will be received.
You have to get the client, the.
You have to let the customer.
Customers to sign up first.
Right.
Okay.
Customer or communities will first say, yes, we support solar, you're a climate smart community, you have done projects, so you're on a leadership wise, doing things. Here comes the time when there is grants available for infrastructure, for fixing things, providing, for example, along the bike ways and canal trails, there could be solar-powered place where someday, if somebody is riding a bike and it happens to be electric and they want to charge it, they're charged up there. And these are things where there is no power right now, they will be self-sustaining. So things like that, which are unique, but at the same time now available, could be part of the project to make that experience for folks better.
So my understanding is, you know, remote site, that you line up the customers, you get the funding. If, in our instance, and you're using Shane Place as the site that you're interested in.
Because of the Canal.
Because of the Canal, yep. Um, that is essentially provides a sustainable infrastructure in that area that can, we can build on for additional amenities, as you're saying, like for electric bikes or little chargers, or using a sustainable source.
Impervious surface is another one, so the surface is, is not just energy, it's also, there's other materials that you use.
Right, that are sustainable.
If there is improvements in the existing parking or projects, they should be more greener, so they allow water going in. I squared is a good example, it's in Ardecoit, which basically had a four-year development, no extra stormwater generation.
And then can you talk about, I see the municipality buying out the, what is it, the?
The system.
The system, yeah.
So, before.
What does that look like?
Before you could, as a municipality, take ownership, you know, directly, you get the funds if you make the investment upfront yourself. Anybody, whether it's profit, nonprofit, or private sector, gets the same benefit. What they've done is that for a nonprofit or municipality, it's called direct pay. So rather than a tax benefit, it's a check from IRS that says, you invested X dollars, here is your. here is your incentive for going. All this is a complex thing and trying to have a community raise the funds and get away with it and ready in the beginning, there are questions. I mean, 10 years ago, folks would say, solar won't work in this climate. The reality is solar works better because it's cold and temperature and it's self-cleaning surfaces and whatnot. So essentially, what you're doing is by, working with a private sector, you're letting them take the risk. And typically, these projects that are done for solar large scale, at about six, seven-year timeframe, they have gotten their returns back and they're willing to sell and pass it on if the community wants to. In this case, it could be planned that way, that you will. It's like a water, waste water department, you have ownership of that facility where it is.
And then we would have, we would be responsible for that.
You will be continuing the operation by the same company that's.
You want to be in that business.
We want a 20-acre solar, right?
Yeah, you know, it's sort of like, not sure we're going there. But it's, it's an interest, but that's an option, we don't have to buy it?
We don't have to buy it.
Okay, just trying to understand the moving parts, yeah, Dave, did you?
Just a couple things. So my understanding is, you're basically looking for buyers, you're people who are currently using R G N E in large scale, whether or not it's the municipality or businesses in aggregate on Chain Place. And you'd go to them and ask, hey, you use a lot of power, do you want to use our power instead? And if we move this forward, it's going to be at a 10% discount to whatever the utility price is in perpetuity for a 30-year contract. Is that correct?
Yeah, the timing of it going to each business owner. It starts first the idea that NIPA and Canal Corporation wants to have their funds, which you can apply for to improve the facilities and make them more sustainable and green.
So that's the beginning of the project. So if we were to say, hey, this is a great idea, in order for all of us to come together, you know, for everybody in business, for profit, they've got to do some things in advance to allow this program to be supported and for you to receive the grant or the funding sources. So one of the challenges is what does all that look like, right? And we might say, yeah, this is a great idea, but if all those improvements are a radical alteration hypothetically of the infrastructure on Chain Place, it may not be something we want to endeavor upon. So my question to you would be is, how do we get to that next stage to see what the extent of the improvements might be on Chain Place? Because 10% discount in utility for an extended period of time versus a private provider is a pretty attractive thing. And if we've got some state money potentially in consideration for improvements for efficiency along Chain Place, that's kind of interesting as well. And optionality to buy, I don't think we'll ever have a solar, right? But, so I guess my question is, is for you to provide us additional detail or for us to understand if it's something we want to move forward, what is our next step? And I think for me, it's an understanding of the degree and the extent by which the state would ask for improvements on Chain Place. And then we'd have to look at what they may be, consider if we want to entertain them, and then consider if we want to then move forward in terms of the energy, right? But it seems like a reasonable consideration, right? So a lot of money come from the state and from different grants to lead us in the right direction. There's no solar panels being put on roofs, we can try to go, you know, alternative, you know, clean energy. I just want to make sure that what the state expects in terms of improvements along a very historic corridor.
So what does that look like in terms of specifics for us? You know, in other words, we get, oh, yeah, yay, green energy, sustainability, it's kind of amorphous, you know, I think. And so I think maybe the next step, from what I'm hearing, is can we drill down a bit? Like, what would that really look like to have that type of infrastructure on Chain Place? And so maybe, we may not get to that tonight because we have a limited timeframe, but is that something that maybe you could put together for us?
Yeah, I, I will prepare a summary that I can submit. But state is not saying, we're going to do this, would you like to make the improvement? State has the funding thing, you as a village.
We have to apply.
Tell us, what would you like to use this fund? For that, I need to sit down with your community, the first time I've come here.
Yep.
I, so my purpose is to know more. What would you like? And for that, a meeting with two or three people that you decide. We discuss and get ideas from, what would you do? Because this, this whole thing is solar energy, green is all great, but what is done has to be an asset.
Right, right.
Well, we need to discuss and talk, like, not this session, but.
So that would be an action.
Now it's, now it's on our, on our minds when we can think about this. I, I think it's a pretty tight timeline to have this together and apply it before the end of July, which seems like your grant deadline. But it's good to be on our radar, and maybe if we don't make it this year, we can do it in a subsequent year.
I think July is pretty tight, yeah. Right, and what I would like in terms of getting people together might be the question, what is the minimum degree of additional efficiency and alterations that would be necessary for the state to have interest? And then what would be, you know, how far could we take it and get funding as well, right? So having, having sort of these minimum and potential maximum. Because for us to just sort of think open-endedly about energy efficiency.
It's not going to work.
Yeah.
I understand. This was just a time to meet, say hello.
Which is great, thank you.
And you designate one person that we talk to and listen to. They have an idea based on history, what you really want to do. If there were agrees, what could be there, like, want to maintain the historic nature. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think Mayor, you and I both are on the sustainability committee.
So the committee could meet.
So the committee could meet.
We could have our committee meet and then pull you in on that, how's that?
Is the board comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan?
Sounds cool.
Okay.
Yeah, awesome.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ron, really appreciate that, thank you. We're, 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 we have one minute.
Two minutes.
We have two minutes?
Two minutes.
Is there a two-minute item we have here? Sorry.
No, it's an act.
Maybe.
Oh, what about, what about the Water Authority community?
Sure.
Hi, Jeff.
Yeah, I think so.
The Water Authority? Yeah, yeah.
There's a, there's a new business here looking to schedule a public hearing for a.
Oh, we could set public hearings, let's do that.
Yeah. How about that?
That's more fun. Thank you for bringing it up, I didn't see that. Yeah. Okay, so, is 15 South Main?
Correct.
Yes, indeed. Hi.
Hi, Emily May Kirkel.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I am an esthetician, I am doing, I have lash business, so my do lashes and brows primarily, just that. I've only been here, I signed my lease less than two weeks ago, and I've only watched two days now. I've been away for the last week, but very, very new to the villager. I've been down the street in 3300, I've been renting a suite down there for the last two years. Lease was up and then this one came up, so happy, happy to be here.
Hmm, okay. So 15 South Main, where is that, what's the?
So I realized after taking a few clients, and they were trying to figure it out map-wise, I guess all like along Green and the town hall, that's 15 South Main Street. I'm north of the line.
The little.
Little one pink door, that's what I'm telling people.
Yeah, that's the best way to.
Yeah.
The first one back to the town hall.
Right up, right up a few stairs.
These are the least stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that could be.
Yep. Yeah, I'm in those days.
And you're by yourself?
Yep.
You're by yourself?
Yeah.
Could it be one chair?
Just me, yep, I have, it's kind of like a, essentially a massage table, looks like that, but I just work on eyes, brows. Pretty much very little to no water, I'm not going to be putting in another sink. Just for plumbing, garbage-wise, I maybe go through a small garbage bag a day.
So no changes?
No changes. Like, the most limited changes that could be in a location, I just pop my stuff in there and I pop myself in there. It's very easy. No fumes, no, nothing.
And you've seen the application?
Yep, I filled out the application, yep.
Okay.
Steve, anything on your end?
Well, I mean, there are no major changes, so I'm glad to have another vacant building being utilized.
Yep.
So we just need to make a motion for a public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for?
July 16th.
July 16th at 16:00 P M. Do I have a second?
All second.
Okay, trustee Poe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall. Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So my D V A right now is under aesthetics by Emily. I was, I don't know if I want to do signage because I have a pretty full clientele.
Is that your business name?
Yes, aesthetics by Emily, but I had a question, if I were to change that, would I go through? All of you, any of that, or would I need to do that, or no?
Just, just.
Just you. Okay, Steve, easy. I haven't decided yet, but that was my one question.
Okay, great, all right, so what happens, have to public hearing?
Yeah.
July 16th?
16th at 16:00 P M here.
So let's say you want to put a sign at the top that has your address, or something's a little more clear, but it maybe isn't a business sign.
Yeah.
I'd like to see.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with you.
Yeah, you can always do the sign after you.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thanks for the love. Thank you, you as well.
Okay. All right, it's after 6:00?
Do you want to just knock off?
I know, we might as well do it, we're kind of on the.
I don't need to knock off.
I know what you meant.
Take care of the next one.
Yeah, we're on a roll, okay, so, oh, oh, it's the Buffalo Bills?
Yeah.
Yeah, 42 West Jefferson.
Nothing's changed.
Pardon?
Nothing's changed.
Nothing has changed, it'll be from July 24th through August 10th.
And is that the short-term retail permit?
Yes.
That's not the special permit?
No, it's, it's just short-term retail.
So then why is that in town?
They charge a dollar for a ride.
Okay, anybody have any comment? Make a motion to move the 42 West Jefferson Road application by the Buffalo Bills to public hearing for a short-term retail permit on July 16th at 16:00 P M.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Poe.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Just comment on that, we love having bills. Come to town.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Want to make sure that we're, when we're starting, whatever.
Yeah.
Time to watch.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
Put go-bills in the minutes.
Yeah, there we go, go-bills.
Go-bills in the minutes.
Yep, all right.
Don't forget.
Setting up, okay, so now the public hearing for 39 South Main Street. Is there anybody here for that? Oh, hi, hello, hello. Come on, we need another chair up here. You can just pull it up, thanks.
Hi. The motion's open.
Yeah, yeah.
Was there anything you wanted to say before we?
Well, I think we talked about what was proposed.
Okay, okay.
At this time, if there are any questions, we're ready.
Okay.
Field of.
Yep, okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second place.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Trustee Poe.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the public hearing is open, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this agenda item? Is there anybody online that has raised their hand, but raised their hand or?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
My second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Hold on, I gotta wait.
Yeah.
Trustee Poe.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's back to the board. Any comments?
Nope, I'll say to me.
Well, entertain a motion then.
Do we need to go through the different steps of the special permit? Should we, or?
First of all, we have to speaker.
Speaker. Type.
Type two.
Yeah, so type two.
With the 617.5, subparagraf, little a, subparagraf 18.
Make a motion to designate this special permit for a salon at 39 South Main Street as a type-two action by speaker according to 617.5a18. All second.
Okay. Trustee Poe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yes, we choose.
Okay.
No, run with it.
Anybody else volunteer? Okay, here we go.
Let's hear it.
All right, so this is, in review of any special permit, we have to go through the particular steps to make sure that it doesn't cause undue hazards harm or otherwise to the village and residents and is in conformity with the comprehensive plan. So let's just knock these off, but I know we have some answers and comments, so thank you for those in advance. And here we go. So A, in zoning code, this is 210-335, get that for. A, conformance with the Pittsburgh Village Comprehensive Plan and town and village local waterfront revitalization were applicable, L W R P is not applicable. And applicant's comment, our research indicates that this use conforms with the village comp plan. It's located, the location is not cited in the town or village local waterfront. And I think it's another business coming into town and otherwise empty storefront currently. It's great to have people, you know, visiting the community, it is authorized best special permit and. Anybody else? Conformance with the district building use and law requirements of this chapter. Yep, nothing different there, right? I think the response is fine. Conformance with all applicable regulations for certain uses as divided by Article 24, that is also affirmative. Adequacy of off-street parking access, there is no off-street parking requirement in the T D D trash management. Same as prior businesses in the same location, so no prior compliance or no change. Adequacy of landscaping and screening, there would not be any compatibility of proposed use with adjacent properties, use of structures. It's very compatible in that there's a number of salons in the village already, as defined by the potential special permit. So unless that otherwise should change, it is quite compatible. Create a hazard to the public health, you've talked about using fairly how you described.
As clean as you can, isn't it?
Clean as we can get in terms of products, so appreciate that. Of course, you'll manage anything that isn't appropriately. Alter the character of the neighborhood, it'd be detrimental to residents, their own production of noise, noxious, objectionable, noise, dust, air, odor, refuse to use vibrations, unsightlyness, none of this, I think, applies. It's all indoors and being cared for appropriately, and in the absence of that, Steve would have otherwise concern. Cause significant traffic congestion, create a traffic hazard, a vehicular, pedestrian hazard in that it's a client one at a time, you know, cycling through, it's not as though you have 10 people rushing to the door at the same time, so, okay, it's fine. Anybody else?
You're okay?
No. That's all. Cause undue harm, destroy existing sensitive natural features, not applicable. Impact historic properties, no change to the building.
Can I just interject something?
Yeah.
There will be a possibility of three.
Possibility of three people working, but not just the solely.
Okay, so there could be three clients coming at a time and maybe some guests with them, but it's nice to have foot traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah, foot traffic's good.
Thank you, we continue.
Appreciate it. No activities would impact historic properties, including the premises. Fail to provide adequate parking to support proposed use, there is no street requirement, petting street requirement. Fail to provide location into a property that has room to accommodate refugees in accordance with village code. It's not a high-intense use for trash, so that's fine. And it's disposed of in the applicant's own home, so it's fair. Will not be adequately served by existing or proposed water. It is, will be adequately served for water and sewer systems. Create public nuisance, I don't think so. Otherwise result in excessive or significant negative impact on the community that cannot be mitigated, no. Any other proposed or existing building use, like condition that, in the opinion of the review and board, may have an impact on public health, I cannot think of any.
Good job.
Good job, Dave.
Agreed.
We got through it.
You're up here. All right, so I make a motion to approve the special permit for the use of 39 South Main Street as a small salon and spa, catering to mostly adult clients in a quiet street.
My second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lickett.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
I have one question for you.
Sure.
Just to clarify, I don't want to do anything like the, because the board didn't keep them in store, because I heard that when I was talking about that last couple of times. So, when it comes to like a sign in the window, do you guys need to approve a sign in the window if it's not on the wall?
I'll look too.
It all goes back to Steve. He'll help you with that.
And it can't be a light-up sign.
Oh, yeah.
No neon, nothing.
And there's a certain amount that you need.
Yeah.
Steve knows all this.
He'll fill you in on guidelines. Thank you so much. Have a great evening, thank you. All right, let's see where we are. Oh, why don't we set a public hearing on the proposed local law extending the moratorium on short-term rentals?
Sure.
Why don't we do that?
Make a motion to set a public hearing to extend the moratorium on short-term rentals in the village for July 16th at 16:00 p.m.
I second.
Jeff, that is soon enough, right?
Yeah, that's the date.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
We've been cranking along with this, we better.
I mean, we're working hard, so no reason to feel that we're not working.
All right. Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Lickett.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
It's July 16th, I think?
July 16th.
What's the date for sure? Everyone would, when the moratorium.
Oh, for the moratorium, not the top of the hearing.
He gets in that range.
Yeah, it's that type of, okay.
I'll let you know if there's one.
It's not July 8th, is it?
No.
Because if July 16th, somebody could potentially put a sign up on July 9th to rent it as a short-term rental, and then it would be grandfathered.
I will take a look, and if there's a problem, we'll amend it at one of your short-term rentals.
Yeah, we'll bring it right back, okay.
But I'll take, I don't know, I'll clap my hands.
Yeah, I'm not. 18th is our next one, our next workshop.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Is our, our regular meeting?
No, she's talking workshop.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant, okay.
I've excused myself out of that one, so I, I'll check. I'll double-check the date.
Okay, next up, the use of Village Lane. What did it say?
I can go ahead if that's the agenda item. So, my, my proposal that I described previously to the board is that, based on a lot of what was mentioned in the comprehensive plan, it's a priority to encourage trail connections, especially to the Erie Canal Trail. Just going to look up the.
I'm sorry, we went back here because he wants to talk. I apologize for interrupting you that way. I just thought he was stepped up for a minute.
He hasn't done his report, so I don't think he's on anywhere.
Yeah, but we just don't know where he went, because he wanted to be here for this too. Well, why don't we just, can we do, might we hit the pause? What?
July 8th.
It is July 8th.
Oh, it is July 8th. Well, then let's.
How many days do we need for a public hearing?
Yeah.
Well, we got time.
We got time.
Special meeting.
It's a special meeting, the problem is.
Oh, could you hit one of their?
Yeah.
How about us, us two?
We have one next Tuesday. How many days do we need for a?
More than that.
Need more than that, maybe.
Because you gotta get it, it doesn't go to the people first.
Yeah, it has to be noticed.
Okay.
Can't go in the paper this Thursday? Or next?
Can't go in the paper on Thursday.
Right. And after that, it's 10 days, 7 days.
The 100 days. Hang on, we have, Dorothea's gonna check it.
Problem is, I don't have your STR scheduled.
Take those.
We only have one currently scheduled for the 18th, we don't have anything thereafter.
June 18th.
June 18th. Give me time. Sorry, I have to do math in my head.
No, that's okay.
Whenever those ones. Looks like right after June 25th would be allowable.
June 25th is a Tuesday night.
Yeah.
Can we do something like at 4:00?
You're holding a public hearing, I wouldn't do it at 4:00.
No, we should do it at 6:00.
So, you said the 1st.
Yeah, I'd say June 25th, that week, after 25th through the 28th, you could do it. I'd have to start double-check room availability, that's the only other thing.
There's nobody else on the calendar right now for that date?
Yeah, I have nothing highlighted, so.
Yeah. On the 25th?
Yeah.
June 25th at 6:00, public hearing.
Yeah, and I've got an event at 6:30, so is, we're longer than a half hour?
It's just.
Just setting, just setting a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if there's no public comment, it can be incredibly quick.
It'll be in and out.
Right. I'm, I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to make it on that one, but.
On that one?
That's it.
Do we have to have a whole court here for a public hearing?
Should have to have a quorum.
We have to have a quorum, that's all.
Okay.
Quorum, three people voting for it.
I mean, we have the 26th available, we got the 27th available.
That whole week is. I can do it after the. It's supposed to be a vacation, then, one week, it's never.
And I'd be able to make it on the 25th.
Never happens.
And it sounds like we got a quorum without me, so let's.
Uh, yeah, the 25th, I can stop in for 6 o'clock, till 6:30.
Okay, so let's, 25th at 6:00?
Sure.
Because we will have a quorum.
Yeah.
Because I, I'll make sure I'm here.
Okay.
And Lily, you can do that?
I can do the 25th.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So we need a motion.
Amending.
Amending.
Canceling a public hearing for whatever date that was.
16th.
I'll make a motion to cancel the public hearing for the short-term rental extension of the moratorium. Scheduled for July 16th at 16:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Lickett.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the extension of a short-term rental moratorium for June 25th at 6:00 p.m.
I second.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lickett.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes. For the 9511 bill, can you come in?
So please do.
We like the papers.
No, but that's, it's a good opportunity.
Yeah, I was going to add, for a special meeting.
Yeah, so this, it all works out then. Okay, so that's all closed out, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Which brings us back to Agenda Item 6, the use of.
I sent you those things.
Oh, okay.
So back to the.
Yeah, I think we're back to the, I think we're back to the use of Village Lane.
Sure.
Yeah, so this, I was mentioning some things in the compline. This actually came up when I was walking the dog with my wife, and we were going down to the canal trail on a weekend, or a weekend, I can't recall. And, you know, she was asking, well, can we cut through to the Arboretum on Village Lane? And there are at least two posted signs, you know, I think nowhere around the corner there. And I was like, well, you know, it seems like it should be safe enough, but it, right now, it's, it's closed down. And I, I wanted to explore with the board whether there is a way that we could share that resource more effectively, given that it seems to be safe during off-hours. I, I noticed that during the most recent canal event with the rowing groups, they were using the entire space when the DPW was off-duty. So essentially, what this would look like is, and there's a map in the packet, I've got a little map up here, but basically, there's a set of gates there, and I'd be looking to go from the canal trail up here to the entrance to the arboretum, which is around that area. So, it's a cut-through that's not utilized by the DPW when they're closed, and.
Which went to point that out to you.
Yeah, the, the canal, actually, it's, what I'm looking for is.
Oh, you mean the little spur that comes off that.
Yeah, the spur, essentially, the spur that comes off here.
This one?
Work. Up here to, you know, staying on Village Lane to the entrance to the arboretum entrance there.
By Saul? I'm trying to see where you're looking.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It might be a little more, and it might be better on a different map, too. So, canal trail, arboretum.
Yeah.
That's the goal. I was thinking of achieving that by going down this way when the DPW is closed.
Yeah, I think that is the end goal of operation of the road, using a path. So, using a path to cut along the grass on the east side of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Up to where the Y is, having them crossing somewhere over there, so there's a defined area for people to be able to cross the road, and then get to the trail at that point.
And it would be, yeah, and this is, we've discussed this.
Yeah, well, the fence separating the road.
Split rail fence, little, something to really make sure that people know exactly how to get to the arboretum entrance, you know? And I, I know Alexandria was trying to set up a meeting with Ted Saul, you know, that, and we talked about that at the last meeting, so he's been, we just have not had, been able to connect, but I'm hoping to do so soon, because he, he's interested in that.
So I, I think that sounds like a, a great idea. It relies on an agreement with a private property owner, and I think that's great if it can be hammered out. I guess what I was thinking is that in the, in the meantime, I'm trying to think of reasons that we wouldn't allow the public to access that part of the lane to get to the arboretum.
Can I interject, though? We own that property, am I correct? That's on that other side of Village Lane. We own it, how many?
There's parts of it that there might be.
But just to get up to the arboretum entrance.
Yeah. Yeah, the majority of it's out.
Yes, so, so the meeting with Ted Saul's sort of a courtesy, you know, courtesy meeting, this is really what we want to do, I've sort of generally spoken with him about it, he's like, wow, that sounds good, you know, but he, he's a neighbor, that's why I wanted to meet with him. It's not his property.
Well, I, I think it, you know, we could look at the, I can pull up the Marrow County GIA's map, but I think we're probably cutting through that corner, which might be on his property.
That's the only part, but we can certainly accommodate it if he doesn't want to stick walk across the corner of his property.
But I guess, so again, those, those might all be solvable questions for some point in future, I guess. What I'm going for is, you know, what would be the reason to not allow the public? I, I think the public was allowed to use part of that lane before. Why wouldn't we just change the posted signs to ones that say, you know, during, avoid this area during DPW working hours?
Or do directional, you know, like a directional sign, like, you know, open between, how do you want to, I don't know.
I mean, people ignore the signs as they exist right now, you know?
Yeah, you have your message.
So putting on a sign, it might help for the people who are paying attention to the signs. Most of the time, that's not going to help any. People get comfortable, too, with the use of it, you know, especially during off-hours, well, I can use it at night, or I can't be here now. That's a lot of problems that we've had as well. And, you know, people trying to come through there during the weekend versus operating hours during the week. It's, it's, you know, I feel like the same conversation over and over. I don't want to limit people, you know, the use of the arboretum, but I also don't want to have potential safety issues.
Well, I, I agree with that, too, and I, I think that, you know, I'm, I'm willing to accept a little bit of risk, especially if we are clear with the public about what is, what is allowable, given that this is such an important goal for the, the community. You know, to go back to the, the comprehensive plan, it specifically mentions formalize and extend recreational trails in the northwest area, and provide connections to the Erie in the northwest area and provide connections to the area canal trail in nearby neighborhoods. Expand and improve green spaces, parks and recreational areas the village should provide for wide-ranging communities. Passively active recreational needs, preserve the existing undeveloped area in the northwest quadrant for public use as natural area that is accessible from the village's parkable core. Just as that, collaborate with the town to create a network of connected pedestrian-friendly public spaces throughout the village, linking to town trails and natural resources. So I guess, you know, if, since this is a, a space that is not utilized during a lot of the time, if we're telling the public what's dangerous and we don't want them to, to go in there, you know, we're paying for the pavement on that street, I'd just as soon let people walk on it to get to a park and, and looking for other reasons that, um, we shouldn't allow them to do that.
Can I ask a question? Would you assume the same risk if you were the operator of a piece of equipment and having something like running over somebody, I mean, over you? I mean, being separated completely from that facility and not having to operate on it? You can assume that risk safely, you know?
Let's tackle it a different way. And I, I appreciate the back and forth, and I think the idea is a very valid one, which is, we have to be able to get from the canal to the arboretum. And hard stop, okay? Either we pay somebody to figure out how to get that done, or figure out how to get that done.
We came up with a plan. We came up with a plan. It's been, it's been before this board probably, I don't know, maybe a minimum of three or four times. And everybody said, that looks good, split rail fence, come around the corner, exactly where you want to go with this. You know, and you came back with the cost.
I haven't seen that since I've been on the board.
Let's bring it back then, let's bring it back.
Again, the cost of putting in split rail fence is pretty cheap. We can do most of the work ourselves unless it's delineated, you know, between where we're using it and where we can have people traveling safely.
Okay.
Um, and still I can kind of, kind of the same thing.
Oh, that's fine. In the interim, when you come in in the morning, put the signs up, and when you leave at night, take the signs down. I don't see any reason why a locked DPW on off-hours, people can't use that road.
So are we talking vehicles or just pedestrians?
Pedestrians, yeah. Pedestrians or bicyclists, because that, that's an access road coming off of the canal path. That village lane goes right to the DPW, but in off-hours it's locked. And that road shouldn't be boarded off, mind you. Just in, in off-hours.
From noon on Friday, in the summer, it's from noon on Friday until Monday morning at 7:00 AM or six AM.
Six AM is when you.
And if we wanted to keep it a little simpler, we could say during the weekday, Monday through Friday at noon, if you wanted to put a sign out there that says inaccessible during the day, right? Or inaccessible eight to five, and then if somebody reads it, they actually read it and then can use it thereafter. But then on the weekends, just full-on remove it and then put it back. I think that's simple enough.
Because on weekends, really, unless it's a special event, right? I'm just trying to, let's just talk through this.
Emergency situations.
Yeah, I was gonna say emergencies, I know.
Sure. But, not that it's, it happens all the time, but there.
No, we understand that, but we're, we're just trying to sort through what that would look like. We have people coming in to do the watering every single day.
Yep, that starts at 4:00 AM.
And that's 4:00 AM. So, you know, okay, I'm just trying to think of all the.
That's the small machinery. That's not the big trucks. Like, I'm really worried about big trucks, people walking up behind a big truck.
I'm worried about anybody operating anything.
But somebody operating a little water truck on a side-by-side.
I don't want to get hit by a water truck.
Sure, but they're not, if they're going fast enough.
Yeah, but those water trucks are out on canal when I'm walking backwards, so, I mean, I don't think that's something to do.
That's right. So to me, this is after 5:00, when you're done, every day should be open to the public. And then on the weekends, especially in the summer, noon to, whenever you get there on Monday morning, put it back up. And then have a little sign that says accessible after 5:00, or take it down every day. But that's the solution until we come up with a, a rail fence or something else that's acceptable to all of us.
Let's come before that. Let's bring that back to the board and let's bring it back, um, what was the, the next one? No, the, the other meeting that we have, the special one.
June 25th.
We could do it.
You won't have time.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's got, yeah, and I just keep it.
Okay, so we'll put on the next.
But, but I think, until we get an approved thing, let's just open it up for off-hours, specifically weekends, and then we'll figure out something different.
So, I wanted to speak with our attorney just about liability of that. Like, what does that look like for us? Because I know, what?
I don't really understand it, but if you're changing the, the risk in that, you know, speaks to insurance.
Yeah.
Controability. I mean, I don't know what the risk is. I don't really understand what you're, I guess I don't, can't envision what you're, you're trying to do.
Trying to letting the public use some pavement, yeah.
No, no, I mean, I didn't mean that.
They already walk on.
I mean, I, I can't understand the geographics of what you're trying to do.
Oh, there it is. There's the DPW. When they come out with the big trucks and people are milling around on that road.
Yep.
Then it could be an issue during the day, right? But otherwise, they're coming in off the canal, here's the canal's path, along by the canal core. They cross into the village property. At this point, they return on the village lane and come up to the entrance to the.
So that's everything.
And there should be signage to my team.
Right, and so we could, if we wanted to, put a sign up that says.
It should have signage.
Right, so I would say, open it up for the people who know where it is and how to get there, great. And the faster we get signs up.
But that's, what saw horse period is, with the signage, how tough is that going to be to just put?
To at least get that done till you can get the fencing up.
Or parallel your own rest.
Just put, just put saw horses, let's say, you know, close from here, whatever.
Well, I mean, we have the means to makeshift, like, a fence to push people around and have them going in the grass with them on the road.
The whole idea is just to make sure that they know that they can be directed, so it's safe.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to be the prettiest, but it'll be.
Well, maybe just for temporary.
I wouldn't even say in the grass. When you guys are off-hours, just let people use the road. But during the, during the business day, when you're there, um, just put the barricade up right there where transitions from town-village property to canal path property.
There are already gates. They can just swing them closed, right, and open them when.
Easy enough to DPW auto. So just have them open on the weekends.
I mean, it's, it's, it's already being used that way anyway, so I think the additional signage is probably not necessary.
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm just trying to remove the liability that's been expressed. Yeah, I mean, right now it says posted all the time, no trespassing, so I'm just saying, make it clear that the public can use that strip of road when the DPW is not utilized, I mean.
Yeah.
So you don't have a sign. You're beginning to find the times.
Hey, it's, here's what I would say.
Just put closed. Put closed and all closed.
When you're there, then take it off when you're not.
Yeah, closed.
Close when you guys are there, take it off when you're not.
You know what you could even do, if you want to keep it remarkably simple, the, the swinging sign that's there now, have a sign that's hung underneath it closed, and then have it closed while you're working, and then at 5:00 every day.
If it's done, take it off.
Swing it open. Or take the sign off.
The sign swings.
You know, the, the.
On the gate, on the swing gate.
Yeah, the gate.
So you want us to open the gate to the.
They want the, they want it all open.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that, because that allows anybody with a vehicle access to the.
That's, that's going to concern, because they had, they had vandalism down there.
Fair statement. So then just have a sign, what do you have right now that blocks people?
Why can't they just walk to the right of the gate?
Yeah.
Along Spall property, but I, and I, with the signage directing them.
Most of the time, after hours, everybody's disregarding it anyway. So we can just pull the signs out, um, open, close, simple enough.
Yeah.
I'm not doing anything more than that, because it's going to get forgotten about. We have enough going on every day.
I agree, it's not good.
Every morning, it doesn't make sense.
Wherever it's easy for you.
But I would be as simple as I have one sign out in front of your eyes that says open or closed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, so, um, that'll happen, and then the action item is we'll bring back, you know, the fencing plan that was brought to the board before, just so everybody can refresh, understand, you know, the direction that that was going.
So the, the direction here, and I, I'd just like to make this a motion so we're on the same page. So Zach, you're gonna have a sign that says open or close, uh, based on whether or not you're there for the, the lane, is that? Um, was that the simplest solution that we came up with?
How are we, just really, how are we steering the DPW? Because the problem has been with people getting on this vandalism and.
Yeah, the DPW is, is village property. There are laws against, um, against defacing the property already. There are no fences around the DPW, so people who wanted to face it will go ahead and do that.
And that's why we need fencing.
Well, that's like spin the fence around and build tall too.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the statement being, if people are going to do bathrooms, they're going to do bathrooms.
Yeah, but it's, it's a larger safety issue being around the DPW. We have scrap metal piles. We have vehicles that park out.
So take the closed thing, right? If you, if you have two saw horses, okay? And while you're there, you just take two saw horses and you push them out closer to the canal. And then when you're not there, you put them on the roads that go into the scrap yards.
I, I want to say this one more time, and I've said this repeatedly since I've taken office. We have the only DPW in the entire county that is not secured, that has no fencing, that has no, uh, you know, like access panels or key, you know, nothing. They need something, okay? So this is temporary, but regardless, the DPW needs to be secured, period. Yeah, you can vandalize anything, anywhere, of course you can, but that's in kind of a remote area. There's heavy equipment, that, that's expensive equipment. You're right, they have storage, it's things stored in the yard.
Yeah.
We need to secure the facility. I, I'll, I'll keep saying it until that happens.
So, so this is a somewhat of a separate discussion though, as far as I'm concerned. What we're talking about here is opening the lane for shared use.
Understood.
The public may use it when the DPW does not. So my motion therefore is that, um, village lane will be open to the public and clearly indicated as such when the DPW is not actively using the space.
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Any amendments to?
Do it just for discussion. If you say that slightly in reverse, which is, instead of being clearly indicated as open to the public as such, instead say that village lane will be closed to the public and clearly indicated as such while the DPW is in session, but not otherwise. That way it's just a closed sign, we don't need an open sign.
I, I will amend my motion as, as Trustee Marshall suggested.
I second.
I have a question. So, coming in at 4:00 in the morning every day to water flowers, we're going to be putting a sign out?
So I, I think this.
As the time that we are packing things up to leave.
So this leaves it open too. I think that if you want to have a sign up that says, you know, stop using this at 4:00 AM, I think that's fine as well.
Yeah.
You can be a little bit creative there.
I don't think anybody's going to argue.
I guess it's at your discretion is what they're saying.
That's right.
That's my motion.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Lang here.
Aye.
Trustee Hope.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lightgate.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
No. I want the DPW secured. Okay. Next up.
So then, if I may, just on the same topic, um, I think it is currently within the administration or Zach to present up the plan to bring that forward for discussion at the July meeting, right?
That's, that's what we had.
Okay, so let's just put it on the agenda for discussion.
That's exactly what we just said.
Sounds good?
Yep.
Okay.
Great, thanks for following up on that.
Yeah, just making sure I'm understanding what's going on.
Okay, next up, item number seven, planning board and zoning code discussion, stamped drawing and lot coverage.
Steve, this is going to be more you than me. And perhaps.
I didn't put this on here.
Well.
Well, you, yeah, if you put the item on, can you kind of introduce and why it's on the, the agenda for the rest of the board and the public, please?
Just go to that. So the question that I had posed was with regards to, let's start with, uh, lot coverage. So right now, across all lots in the village, we have a 25% lot coverage, right? That lot coverage is for anything. It doesn't matter if it's a driveway, a building, any impervious surface, right? And I had received some comment that, uh, from the planning board, member of the planning board, to consider, uh, disjoining buildings from just straight impervious surfaces. The idea that you have a building that might be 25% or 20%, and then everything else is some other, some different number. And part of the reason for that comment to me initially was, uh, it seems like we have a lot of these, um, area variances for things that are relatively minor or things that could get moved around. So for example, um, let's take the building on, um, State Street that widened the garage, or widened the.
The driveway.
So there was a, a two-car garage in the back, which by code right now, they're entitled to a two-car wide driveway. But based on the law, there was only space for a single wide driveway on the left side of the building. But because they were entitled to a two-wide driveway, they were able to expand the driveway to the front of the home. However, at the time, they also needed an area variance. The area variance wasn't for anything to do with the house, it just was to do with the driveway. And that was the only variance they needed to put that in. It had nothing to do with the visual, it had nothing to do with being, uh, two cars wide. It strictly had to do with the area variance. And I think they might have only been at 27 or 26. It was a fairly decent-sized lot. It wasn't a huge variance that was granted. But what was interesting is they could have just simply stolen from a small patio, impervious patio on the back and removed it in order to make the driveway. The point being is, the building wasn't changing at all. It wasn't as though they were building this big, massive garage in the back or changing or altering, uh, the, the building footprint. And so, in part because there's a lot of these homes and, um, lots already that are well beyond the 25%, might there be some consideration where you have a 25% building lot coverage or 20% building coverage and a 30 or 35% or something bigger or wider? And I just wanted to open it up for discussion, hear comments, hear perhaps from Steve. Susan, if you had any comment, um, and others in the community, just throw it out there for discussion and hear where, where it goes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, you got board and then Steve. Okay, Lily and then Steve.
Thank you. Based on a number of applications that come, what, what things are just popping and no particular order based on what you, uh, what you're inquiring. My first thought would be, uh, the, uh, pervious surface is that, that percentage is important because you're talking about runoff, and you know this being on planning board, that you don't, the idea is that you're not covering the green space, covering one more green space with more, whether it's a building or whether it's, uh, a pervious surface. That's number one. Number two is the situation, and we've seen several in the, in the village, where there is parking created in the front yard. That's not something that we want to encourage. And to remove that, um, from our code, to allow that, permit that, because it was unfortunate, it's my personal feeling, what occurred on State Street, because it was a technicality, let us say. Rather than look at the, at the entire situation, what it created, and that, what it created was parking of vehicles in a front yard. There's another home on State Street that has the same situation. I don't know why they were permitted, but I don't know what their lot coverage is, but it would appear that it goes over, uh, the lot coverage allowance, but the front, almost the whole front yard was paved, and now cars park in it. Uh, you know, I don't think this is something that the village wants to encourage. So I would not want to reduce that number of what our lot coverage, um, presently sits, so I don't, I, I wouldn't want it stricter rather than, um, less restrictive. It still creates runoff, whether it's a two-story building or just circus. That's my.
No matter what, it's impervious. Yeah, I mean, you know.
That's right, it's still causing runoff, which is the whole point.
Okay, okay. Yeah, 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 Steve, I need to literally.
Simplest solution for all this, because I've done studies in here, there's not one neighborhood that's 25 or under. The, the smallest average neighborhood I've found here was 29% coverage. The simplest solution would be to change it to 35%. That would allow the small changes. It won't affect your driveway thing in the front yard, but here's the other thing. Air-free driveways in the front yard, technically. Anybody can park, and not, you don't want a driveway in front of the house.
We could, let's just kind of.
Front of the house is Lily what, where she, you were going.
Yeah.
The driveways are to the side of the property, showing the full, uh, you know, frontage of the house without a car.
There are, there's.
For the most part.
Nine properties in the village that have parking.
A little bit of.
Can I just ask you, doesn't that have to go through HPP?
Pardon?
Doesn't that have to go through HPP?
Not probably, no.
But you're, it's landscaping.
It's, it's, it's landscaping, don't go in front of HPP. You can change as much as you're setting your teaching.
Okay.
But, but the easiest solution to the whole lot cover thing would just be adjust it to 35% to allow somebody to put a shed on their property without having to get a variance for lot coverage. You know, like I said, the average on the smallest neighborhood was 29%. Many were in 31, 32%, where there, there, that's the existing, that's reality of where we're at in the village.
Can we be incremental as a board and consider 30? If we're being told.
1% more?
Well, if we're being told that the.
Over what it is, I'm just.
If the average, if the average is 29, it means that some are under and some may be over. Rather than allowing everybody to be over and just assuming that 35 is the right number.
If you're under 29.
Right, so, but if you could go 30, that may open it up.
Yeah, Susan?
Susan Lott, uh, 85 South Main Street, and a member of the planning board. Um, I've been talking for months about, um, the variances that we have given offer in various reasons, that is slowly chipping away at the green space, the, the yards in the village, which I, I think this issue isn't just a matter of, well, let's make it another percentage, because once it's another percentage, then the variance is going to go to 35% or it's going to get incrementally bigger. I think this is a moment to talk about what we want preserved in the, in the village in terms of traditional neighborhood character. I get it, SUBs are, are big and there are other types of, of realities, but I think we need to think about this in terms of, of preserving green space, preserving ushants, and, uh, talking about the, the character of the village.
No, thank you, thanks for that. Yeah.
Robert Corby, Southern Washington, I do, I agree with everything Susan just said. I also think, you know, one of the problems and one of the reasons when we did the comp plan, we set the percentage where we did, is because there's many areas in the village that have hydroic soils that are saturated most of the year and places like along Sutherland Street where almost every house has a wet basement. And what happens when you do these incremental expansions and contractors aren't carefully paid up to the house, you end up with wet basements. We have a stormwater system that in many areas is at capacity. And I think also in light of not just the physical character that Susan addressed, but I think also in terms of a more sustainable strategy for the future, knowing that with climate change and the increased storm events that we're getting, we need as much green space as possible to maximize the absorption and minimize the problems that we already have with stormwater.
Thanks.
If I may, just in the follow-up, I think this is great. This is exactly why I wanted to have this conversation. One of the things that I remember on the planning board was when we talked about. When we talked about area variances, specifically lot coverage. If somebody came in with 29% lot coverage now or 35% lot coverage now, there's always this question, is it significant? And if it was 35 and it was going to 36, it wasn't significant, but from 25 to 36 it's, meaning it's already out of conformity. And to your comment, the chipping away, if everything is just incrementally from 26 to 27, 27 to 28. So this is going to take this conversation the inverse, and this is kind of, in a way, hoping where I was going to go with this, is right now, that chipping away is to the detriment, meaning, how can we have the 25% lot coverage be the target, suggesting that everything is not in conformity now? But we don't really want to grant it beyond what is already non-conforming to say, if in our code, we're asking for what is significant, for it to be from the target 25% rather than from the existing, is that simply something the planning board, um, considers? If I remember, we sort of considered both. We didn't always do it just from target, though. We would sometimes consider it from the current, right? And, and so I don't know if there's a way in the code to have that, the significance of an area variance be specific from target.
So if you.
I, I, yes, I'm recognizing you, yes. Trying to run a meeting.
If you, if you preserve the target, um, and with acknowledging that this is a non-conforming village in so many ways, but if you preserve that baseline, then everything beyond that can be, uh, considered in terms of runoff, in terms of neighborhood, in terms of visibility. But I think the minute that you acknowledge non-conformity, what, what are you doing to the goals of the, of the village code in the, in the first place?
Yep, okay.
Great.
So then.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for the input, and I think we bury this and continue to preserve the 25% lot coverage.
You know, I mean, I always, I always say our mantra is pre-existing and non-conforming, you know?
Okay.
Yes.
So just because I never get the, um, I have been thinking about what it means to have a non-con, a, a village reality that is so out of sync with the code. I would hope that at, at some point, even as a model for other small villages in the state, that instead of superimposing a code onto our unique village, we look neighborhood by neighborhood and say, the setbacks in this neighborhood are this amount, that's good. You can look a, a, a run along Monroe Avenue and get enormous setbacks. Then you, then you look on South, South Main Street and it's different. But it's, it's appropriate for that neighborhood. It's descriptive of that neighborhood. So anyway, I dream, but, um, I would, uh, be so interested in looking at a code that starts from the physical reality and what we want to preserve instead of a code that has been overlaid on, on the, on the village and is just where you get into situations like, if this is non-conforming, well, is that, is that significant? Is it intrusive? Is it, um, so, so anyway, just wanted to get that up.
No, thank you, but what would that look like? So we would identify the. So we would identify the neighborhoods?
Yep.
Okay, that would be a step. And the unique characteristics?
Yeah, what, just what, what's there?
What's there, okay. Now, I'm just trying to think, think how that would.
The code is pretty easily set up.
Yeah.
It's already distinguished by zone and.
LDR and FDR.
So by the only one you can have in the zone in terms of setbacks, there, a lot coverage size of.
It's uniquely different, though, so let's take, for example, you know, in that we're all in a historic district, but there are certain areas that are in different time periods, you know, the post-war Heatherhurst Court and Circle is uniquely different than the Monroe Avenue quarter. I, you know, in talking and when you were campaigning, you know, one of the conversations is the, there are unique areas that feel sometimes removed, even though they understand they're a part of the village and they're part of a historic preservation. And even when we talked a little bit about short-term rentals, the fact that not everything is in the National Historic Register, right? But, I mean, I would entertain the idea of the planning board presenting to us what they think might be a unique way of interpreting some of these comments, specific to one area first. And then we can see if it might be applicable.
Use it as a model, you know, kind of a prototype of what that would look like.
Yeah, if you were to say, what might the Heatherhurst Court and Circle post, what, what might that look like differently? And why? And, and go through an exercise, you know, with the planning board and, and then present back to us, you know, hey, we're in planning now, right? Here's what we would do a little different than what the code currently says. And then we can entertain the idea of adopting it. I think that would be a great use of the planning board.
Wheels are turning for Jeff, I can tell.
But, but to your point, and to the, to comment on like area variances or something, it is different there. So why are we applying everything here in the village?
It's a cookie cutter.
Yeah, the high density, low, medium density, why are we applying it there when it's uniquely different? But we still want it to be historic, we still want it preserved. Because I think, you know, just to comment on that district in Zingle, 100, 150 years from now, it'd be remarkably amazing if it's still preserved in the same sense as it is today. And I think nobody wants to have it be outside the historic district because then you run the risk of having things get torn down and different structures be built. So, I mean, I like the idea of seeing what the planning board might come back to us with, specific in that district, in that area, and identify exactly where it might be. And then go from there as like a model of this idea.
Yeah, Justin, do you want to say something? Oh, I thought I saw movement down there. So Bob, you had your hand up earlier?
Yeah, I was just going to say, because when we did the comp plan, we did go partially in that direction, that zoning districts would change to reflect kind of the lot size. And there is language in the code that talks about like the average setback in the district. So if you build a new house, you have some flexibility where it should be based on the context, which I think is what Steve, Susan is advocating for.
Yes.
Does, what do you think, Susan? Do like a prototype sort of?
I, I will, for me, I'll head to the next meeting and I'll see if anyone wants some extra, extra work.
Go to it.
I agree, we, we do, we, we talk about it. So I think, you know, given the right small neighborhood, it might be used to like.
And I do think too, you know, for homes that, you know, Steve, to your point, we know they're non-conforming, we know they're pre, you know, pre-existing non-conforming. And if they want to do something, what, why would something that they do there be, be subject to the exact same standard as a, as a home on Rand Place? Specific to some of these measurements.
That's exactly where.
Right, so I think, I think it's great because it creates some flexibility where maybe they don't feel like they have it, when why wouldn't they? And so, yeah, I think it's a courtesy, okay, great, so.
Jeff, were you having any thoughts or you're just, you're deep diving there?
Okay, so my next one was stamped drawings. So there was a application before the planning board for fairly large, well, I'm just going to use the words that were given, you know, fairly large new building on a lot. That was, I think, outside the 25% lot coverage already, but it was a, it was a new building, new structure in the back.
By Sutherland.
By Sutherland, thank you. And they came before the planning board without stamped drawings, but I guess some drawings of some sort. And they were asking for approvals. It was, it was a very significant improvement to the property. And they didn't want to go through the, the work with an architect, to pay for an architect for a project that was going to get denied. But nor did the planning board have what they needed in order to make a decision to approve. And so there seemed to be a little bit of a, a butting of heads of sorts in terms of, hey, how can we get this done and have the resident know if they're going to invest this money, it's likely? But in the same vein, how can they present something to the planning board that is good enough for them to make even a tertiary judgment?
But isn't there a little more to that question you just asked? How can they present something that satisfies at least to a certain extent to the planning board that doesn't require being stamped? That additional burden on the, on the applicant, you know, in other words, I think that's, yeah.
So who then has to go before HPP? When, you know, major, you know, exterior tweaking or changes could, could happen. So it's a good question.
So my answer to that question, if I might, is to come to the HPP first on information only with some rough drawings, some rough sketches of what they want to do. You know, if they're at the stage of building, you ought to be with an architect anyway. And talk to the HPP and make sure they're on the right track, present from a preservation point of view. And then if they get, yes, you're on the right track, if you genuinely do this, then they can get the class put together and point you people. Which is one we suggested to add to this.
Yeah, and so it's really, it's really the process of bringing an applicant along. Then so HPP.
Anything project like that involves a new architectural, whatever, should come to the HPP first for information.
Yes, for information only, and that was my recommendation, Joe, to that.
So then let me, Steve, if I can interpret what I heard from you is, we can't ask them to have a stamped drawing before they get an approved project. It's an additional cost, a lot of additional work, and it's not required.
I think, I think we can ask them to get a stamped drawing after they leave the HPP informational session because planning board can't work without a stamped drawing, they need to know. You're on the other side. And then, Steve, you're, you're putting a lot of burden on a resident. You're, you're, you're making a resident responsible to spend a lot of money before approvals. There should be no reason, I'm on a planning board, I've been on a planning board for 12 years. I can take a set of, you know, a site plan with a proposed building on it, look at the size it is on a lot and make an informed decision without having stamped architectural plans. The only time you should have stamped architectural plan is for building. That's the requirement for, I have to have it in order for having the space for load bearing or educational over a certain value. Asking somebody to come in and spend five, eight grand on a set of plans to get approval and then maybe get denied, or just like five, five was too tall, they wanted it dropped down a little bit. Great, that's, that's great, so now you can make another concept drawing to drop the roof down. And, you know, they see the footprint, that's what they're concerned with. Planning board is a footprint of what, what it presents on the lot, how it looks to the lot. HPP is the aesthetics on it, you know what I mean? So you can do a concept drawing, not have it stamped.
So let's talk about the application then. What, what is the extent of the drawing that's required in any given application? Enough to understand?
Enough to understand, a reasonable understanding to make an informed decision.
Okay, and Susan, you, you started to say something, you're agreeing. You're agreeing, just, okay, okay, no, just so we're all kind of.
You have to, and to me, you have to have some, you know, in order to be on a board and to serve, you have to have some basic knowledge of looking at a, a set of drawings, be able to discern and say, I understand that. If you don't, that's on all of us or, or the boards to make sure that they have enough knowledge to serve.
So when we, you know, many of us were on the planning board and, right? We saw a lot of really great drawings and not all of them were stamped, or at least I don't even know if they were stamped because the drawings were good and we understood the application was complete. And that was, right. And so the point that I guess I'm making is, the board has the authority at any given time to say, this application is not sufficient for me to understand what's occurring. You need to provide additional detail. And whether or not it gets stamped or not, whether or not it gets stamped or not is another matter entirely. And we have no current requirement for any plan to be stamped for the planning board to approve or site plan to be provided. Should they demand it? Can they?
Yes, oh yeah, they have a, they have a right to ask for more information. That's why, that's why the meeting, the deadlines of the meeting is five weeks.
Understood, but the, the question you're asking and my understanding, does the board have, can they require stamped plans?
Can they require? If the majority looked at it and said, this is too much for us without it being stamped.
Hang on, Susan's hands up, yes, Susan?
Well, of, of course we can ask for that, suddenly talking row. I mean, oh my, oh my goodness. Of course we, we have that obligation to understand what's going on. Right, but, you know, there, there are, you know, kind of very few kind of opportunities for projects of that, of that scale, but who knows?
So when site plan is issued and, you know, the building permit's issued, by the time it gets to the building permit, it is stamped. And then you're making the determination, and you're making the determination that the site plan is in conformity with the stamped architectural plan that is presented.
Yeah.
And so as a result, the conclusion of this entire conversation, I appreciate it, it's nice that it's in the public sphere, is that the planning board can require any degree of plans that they might wish, so long as it's the majority of the planning board and it's necessary for the work for it to not be arbitrary and capricious. And if it happens to be that they require a stamped plan, then so be it. If they don't, and the majority of them don't need one, then for it to be built, then a stamped plan would be issued.
Right, and it is in the code that the planning board can require any extra information as required by the board.
That is all I needed, I really appreciate it.
The bottom line that I've always taken away for boards is, you need, your requirements are whatever you need to make the decision and apply the criteria of the code and transact business for the village, period.
Yeah. And ultimately, intensity of project.
Sure, exactly.
What's the difference between stamped drawings and scale drawings?
No, I know, I'm serious.
How many thousands?
I can show you a scale drawing.
Scale drawings a lot of times don't have all the detail that's necessary for me to make, to issue a permit. I don't have the stamp, I don't have, you know, a lot of extra information that, and I'm just a, somebody's concept drawing isn't required.
Doesn't it also assume a licensed expert in that?
Well, they're putting, they're putting a license behind the plan.
The stamp, right.
What are the materials, sorry, Susan, go ahead.
Oh, no, but, you know, we've seen kind of very detailed and very accurate non-stamped plans that were, you know, perfectly, perfectly okay.
What would stamped plans add informationally to the planning board that really good a detailed plans would not? Nothing.
But you, you can build something from a stamped plan.
Well, again, I just have to refer back to 75 Monroe Avenue that the stamped plan then includes a professional, a professional's opinion in preparing that and preparing this.
Which you might want in a really large project.
Well, yes.
On a large project, yeah.
But, but to this end, and this is the value of our boards and the conversations that can take place amongst the boards, that if a majority of the board would want one, they can request one. If the majority of the board does not want one, they do not need one.
I think that's always been at the discretion of the boards, that's always been my understanding.
I'm just reiterating my understanding in operational manuals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thanks, and thanks, everybody, for your input. Okay, next up, review of the Monroe County Water Authority Agreement. We need water. Yeah, oh, yeah, I guess you're up, Jeff, yeah, thank you, thanks for.
Okay. This is not entirely different from the last agreement. The first interesting thing that is also in the last agreement is in 1.3 at the end. It talks about, there's any title defects to any of the real property required for our system in documents that we've gotten from the past, that it's our duty to fix it. Well, you think about that for a minute and say, well, why, why do we want that? If it was our system, we'd have to fix it anyway, right? So somebody said, you don't have these, let's go over my property for that water pipe. And we dug it up and somebody had missed 10 feet, we want to fix that. We were running the water, right? So that's why the water authority is putting that burden on us, because it's our system that we have given up. And it needs to be fixed, then we ought to fix it.
Jeff, I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat the meat of the, again? And what number are we talking to?
Yeah, yeah, give us the number again.
I don't want anybody getting too excited about this, okay?
Okay.
Not, this is not.
Well, you brought it up.
I know. Little thing, they're little.
Okay, okay, just, just pointing it out to us.
Yeah, what, what number is this?
1.3.
He told me not to pay the 10.
Did you say 1.3?
Under operation and maintenance, that would be great.
Yeah, 1.3 at the end.
Oh, yeah, I see, okay.
They have it during the German agreement, Bill, she'll run me her care, the answers, any facts and easements, licenses, blah, 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 blah. So that means that originally, when it was our system, before the water authority bought it in 84, we had easements, licenses in place to allow the pipes to run where they're running, hydrants to go where they're going, and all of those were great and nobody ever bothered us. And so we passed all of that along to the water authority. Water authority saying, if Joe Smith at whatever address says, you don't have the right to come across my property. And he's right, then we'll fix that, either by condemnation or whatever.
Okay, that makes sense.
So.
That makes sense, okay?
Yeah.
It's basically saying, we agree to something and then we pass it on and what we agreed to, if we're faulty in, we got to fix it.
We represent, we owned it, we're correct, it's a solid water authority.
So we're just making good on prior easements, licenses, or leases.
Right.
But not owing up to any repairs that would be needed to that.
No, no, so nothing to do with the infrastructure. That's everything just to do with the real property.
Understood.
Let's see, 2.1.
2.1?
2.1. Yeah, I bothered me at first because it's identical to the provision in the other agreement, I'm not sure why I bothered, I had to fly.
So if we put something new in, we're.
Yeah, especially if we do without their approval.
Yeah.
So the next one, in the next paragraph, the phrase, when economically feasible, kind of bothered me. You know, we need it, but the authority doesn't think they make money on it, so they're not going to do it.
Zach, did you?
It's in the other, it's in the, in the first agreement.
Oh, it is?
Exactly, this will be the first.
Yeah, Zach, what you.
There was a situation where, when we were paving Grove Street back in 2016, it was a small extension with three houses on it. And as the paper was going down through there, we're assuming that was what created this issue, but a water lane burst. And the village hired a contractor to come in and repair that, trenching the road down through there. Now, this was before my, my role as the superintendent. And I'm not sure how that would fall.
What do you mean, should we have done it?
Yeah. Or we caused it, going in there and repairing it without. So we're, we're okay.
Did you, did you, I mean, did you call the water authority a long time ago?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the, the right thing to do. But you gotta, you gotta fix the problem, you got water coming out. And you caused it, so, or at least.
You broke it and fixed it.
Because it's, it's always possible.
What are you thinking, Dorothea?
Just from working with the water.
Just from working with the Water Authority in the past, I think at all times, we shouldn't be fixing their stuff. We break it, yeah, we pay for the repair, but there are certain criteria, making sure the water stays clean and clean.
Yeah, plus the issues if something didn't go right and there's still a leak on the ground.
We could damage more.
That the way this happened with Scott was probably involved.
I wouldn't guess.
Yeah, I'm not going to say.
Well, I'm guessing that someone was involved. And they communicated to the water company, probably the water company had something outside, and they just went and fixed it.
If that happened, it's fine. I would just say, I would make sure we contacted the Water Authority.
Yeah, I think that my move is to contact Water Authority and let them direct us how they would or fix it themselves. But in the event that we are taking coming cars, it does happen, a lot of times.
Yep.
The next one I don't have an answer to is in 4.4.
Page five?
4.4, yeah, on page.
Page five. That's the last one.
Yeah, the last one. I have no idea what additional hydrants are and what the significance of them is. I will, I just haven't had a chance to get a hold of their regulations. Because the authority's rules are what controls them, so I want to read that rule before I say, yeah, this is okay to sign.
Okay. Is that the type of thing where if the village all of a sudden became a small city and we wanted hydrants everywhere, but it's just allowing that to be placed in?
I have no idea. I don't know. I know that we're going to pay for it if we ask for it.
Right, good.
We don't really have anything else. It's a 40-year contract. No, there's no renewal system because it's 40 years, so.
There's no 10-year renewal like there was. No.
It's a straight 40-year shot, 40-year shot. And since my advice on the last one was to sign it.
Your advice on this one is to sign it?
Subject to mandatory award.
Yeah, just of those things you brought up.
Things like that. The things I brought up, I know we shouldn't have considered it.
Okay.
So for the last one, I don't have any answer to it.
Okay.
So we'll find the answer.
One of the quick, well, one of the quick questions that I have is, you know, we've heard a lot about municipal waters across the country, giving, you know, food, lead pipes, or other various things. What requirements does the county have in providing us information on our water? Quality over any given period of time? You have no idea.
I actually can answer that. They have to issue a statement every year on the water quality. You should be receiving that with your bill or it might come separate.
That's right.
And it gives you what is the percentage of lead and all that. They just have to do that.
So it's a once-a-year?
Once a year, they're.
Yeah, they show you the lab results.
Yep.
With your bill.
And we don't do any independent testing, right? It's just a once-a-year?
Our system is not our water anymore.
Right. But if it were to be contaminated, then do we have recourse?
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, they're issuing false information, absolutely. But they have to issue, they have to issue a hundred years. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm assuming you mean if they issue a report that shows it was tainted.
What I'm saying is that at some point, the water becomes unclean, is this, does this allow us to have recourse?
Yeah, we can pull that kind of off. We work with them to work out the problem.
Is that embedded in this contract?
No, it doesn't have to be. You just pick up the phone and say, do you want us to terminate or shall we work? I mean, you wouldn't even consider terminating. You would pick up the phone and say, hey, we need to solve this. And if you can't solve it, then you have to see a judge about solving it. You know, whatever the contract, we don't have the, we don't have the ability to get back in the water business. So you would just have to do what you would normally do with problem solving.
So you're basically just taking the contract and saying you're not, you're not upholding your own contract?
I don't think it would be based in contract too much. You know, I haven't thought my way through that problem, but I mean, what are you asking for? Damages? I mean, that really is up to the individual.
Clean water.
Well, yeah, but that's, I mean, is it really our problem? We're not the supplier of water?
Yeah, it's the user's problem. Once you contact the Water Authority and they sort it out. If it's village-wide, then.
Yeah, this is, this is not our system anymore.
Okay, so your statement is that we are removed from it, and as a result, it's not our problem? Even though I'm trying to ask the.
So what's our action going forward then?
I'm looking at what, where you can call it is?
Hang on, guys. Hang on, guys. We're talking up here. So what action does the board need to take?
Um, await my go-ahead, Simone.
Okay, just, you're just giving us the update. This is where you are. Okay, thank you. Next up.
Thanks.
American Legion lease.
We made the changes that were requested.
I just saw one possible typo here, Jeff, in number 18. It should be quiet enjoyment instead of enjoying. Otherwise, I think we should quit enjoying.
18, you said?
Improving, yep. Covenant of quiet enjoyment.
Why did you make that mistake?
I'm quiet tomorrow.
That's a good one.
I didn't make it.
Yeah, you're talking, I don't mean it.
There are neighbors. Any other comments?
This is a one-year auto renew with the ability to terminate it, well.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve the American Legion lease. Oh, we got to seeker?
With quiet, with quit, change to quiet.
With quit, change to quiet. Paige, I want to say that.
Section 18, hold on.
Section 18.
Can you authorize the mayor to sign later?
We don't have to authorize. Yeah, authorizing the mayor to sign the lease. You have to authorize.
To authorize the mayor to sign the lease. Hold on a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll close.
Hold on.
Yep, good problem.
Couldn't spell lease up on it. Trustee Lempel, trustee Coe, trustee Marshall, trustee Lake, mayor Palmer.
Bye.
Okay, next up, bench installation discussion.
Bench?
Yeah, bench.
Okay, because Zach had, there's a lift, I don't know if Zach made it or helped us, there were a number of things. We had discussed at the last meeting around the trustees, that an idea, put the bench, to bring the bench out of the shop and to place it, you know, with some of us there and maybe Mr. Newcomb there and so forth, and take pictures to send it to the DOT to say, this is where we'd like to put it. What do you think? Come on, give us an answer, please. What do you think? I said they saw the visuals, that that might help spur their decision-making?
It might just be, you know, a process for them in which, you know.
Can't hurt.
You know, a little bit, a little bit to, you know, kind of refocus on it, yeah.
Yeah, we have to make a decision to say, oh, look, that's not going to work at all. Or maybe even try it in a couple of different spots to give them options so that we can get something, place something there.
Yeah, I mean, at least trying to find out what the hold of is anyway, even going from there. Why don't you be able to get the permitting engineer to come out and actually see it on site?
Yeah, they may want to do a site visit.
Yeah, I mean, as a touch, one thing that if we're talking about doing a pocket park at Phoenix Building, about doing an overall plan in its entirety to present to them, so it's only one permit that we have to do.
Oh, yeah.
I wish we did do.
Well, that's not a.
Not just the bench, not just the plantings, but the overall.
Yeah, because that's something that.
So we can keep one permit rather than piece you in a bunch.
Mike Newcomb was approached about that years ago, and I know he was interested in that. And I think even, I mean, this is going back. I know, like, it could have been a project with the scouts to help do it.
Yeah.
And I don't even know whatever happened to that. Because maybe it could be.
So what's the difference between the plantings and a pocket park?
Well, from what it looks like right now, it's two different permits.
Right, so a pocket park would mean?
For a pocket park would be like a site plan. So it's one permit application for all this stuff going on.
And I remember the discussion, this is going way back, it was with Historic Pittsburgh, I think. I mean, I'm going back quite a ways. And it was about putting benches in, but identifying that entrance to the Phoenix Building and removing the bollards that are around with the chains and putting in plantings that were appropriate for the period of the building and how gardens would look. But that, going way back on that, I don't, and I know, I don't know whatever came to that.
No.
And I think that.
No, I'm sorry. I thought that made it kind of against the.
But this is something different. This is the bench with the plantings to discuss, to, this is close up, you know, don't name it bench by, you know, an individual, and he's paid money and he's, you know, like to see the bench placed. So I think that we have an obligation to follow through. And that's the only application that's before NISTAD.
Does it go through the plantings?
There's the plantings.
Oh, with, okay.
Well, there are two pending permit applications.
I have one application in for a bench.
Oh, I see. That's what I didn't understand when he said pocket park.
One for the bench and one for the plantings. Yes, if there's another application for another bench, I don't have that.
There were two benches that you wanted to have installed. One was at the Phoenix Building, the other one was down at James State.
Okay, I did not have the paperwork for that one.
Should have. I know that, I gave you that.
No, I really was fast, I should have.
I can, I don't.
All right, I will follow up with the DOT tomorrow to find out what is pending for the village's permit applications and go over them.
And then, and then maybe approach the board with a possible date that put the bench in place just for picture, for photo law, to give an idea of where to go.
Um, we can do that at that.
Okay, that'd be great.
Definitely, it's not raining.
Thank you, that was bench installation.
Yes, yes, discussion, number 11. Okay. Next up, discussion on rules and procedure of village board meetings.
Okay, so this is something that came up with the last board. And based on a suggestion from NICOM, if you look at the NICOM handbook, which I really recommend, I think I'll look at it. Dorothy, I'll check the copies of the NICOM handbook. Basically, they say that they don't suggest that boards adopt Robert's rules for the meeting procedure, since it's overly complex and not worth it. Instead, they suggest you adopt your own rules or procedure that are less structured than Robert's rules. So essentially, I copied and pasted from the NICOM handbook. That's pretty much what we have here. We made a couple of modifications and adopted it. I know it's getting late, so everybody's probably thinking, what's the least amount of work that would be that's reasonable to get out of here? And I guess we could go in a lot of depth and talk about this. Or we could just perhaps ask our clerk to update the section about when the meetings are and, you know, kind of just keep it as is. But either way, I guess this is what's in place right now with the changes that we've learned on as a board about the meeting times and everything.
I still, just for the record, I still think the meetings should start at 6:30. I do. I agree with NICOM's suggestions on that.
But they were, who was voted in for five?
Oh, I know it was. I'm just going on the record saying, I think we reach out to people who had a work schedule between nine and five. You know, they maybe come home with some good kids and have some dinner, and then they can come to a meeting or, you know, whatever. I just, that's all. I just wanted to give my own input again. So other than that, Dorothea, did you have any?
No, I just brought this forth, and Justin, you did relay that you asked for this last year. I did actually present it last year.
Yeah.
It was on the agenda for June 13th, so it's been a year. So it might be that the board needs to review it every year to make sure it's current and maybe need to do it at organizational time.
I think that's a good idea. I like that, just, you know.
Yeah, just so it's not lost in the shop.
Yeah, yeah, every year maybe.
This is what we have right now. This is our.
Yep, this was adopted by the board. It was brought back June 13th last year on the American, and we did the algorithm. That's how I discovered it. And I think no action was taken. It was a minor change. I'll make the current changes as requested at the 5:00 PM. It's already been changed to Tuesday. I think it was reflected at the last meeting. Unless the board sees any, had seen anything they wanted to change. I mean, it's pretty standard.
The only other change that I would suggest is posting this on the website or somewhere prominent too, since it's basically.
That's a great idea.
The meetings, but I don't.
We're in the process of redoing our website. We're in the pipeline for that. So we should, we could set up a page.
I can put it on there now.
Yeah, okay, great. That's great.
I'll find it.
Okay, all right.
There's a comment from a departmental office.
Yes, Susan?
I just, as a side note, I want to show that I've had six different people comment on the timing of the meeting. Two prominent businessmen, two homeowners, that have commented on the meetings being at that early and they have trouble getting here.
I know, that's good. And actually, if you could ask them to just even send in a quick email maybe about that, just so we have it as a matter of record, that would, that would be helpful. Thank you. That's for that important.
So we can, we can always revise this if nobody's got anything right now. Are we just, are there any concrete changes for tonight? Or we just, we can amend at any time.
Yeah, we can.
So I'll make a motion then to have our clerk update the procedure based on our prior votes and also to post the document on the website. So?
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Is that a second?
Yeah.
Oh, I wasn't sure if you were like.
Trustee Coe, trustee Lempel, trustee Lake, trustee Marshall, mayor Palmer, now she has this.
Okay, so let's circle back to the DPW report. Hi, Zach. Thanks, Susan. Have a good evening. Yeah, okay. We'll start in here. Questions for Zach first?
Zach, you talked about existing.
Do I have a question?
Yeah, just other que, any questions?
I do.
Lisa has a question. I'm recognizing Lisa.
Thank you.
I do, too.
And then I'll recognize Lily.
So the tree donation policy, you're, you comment that we do actually have an existing donation policy. You're just asking for verification that that's still in place? Is that what?
Uh, yes. I'm not sure if it needs to be revisited or not because the $450. And I wrote this out before I knew that this was actually formally adopted and the cost associated with it.
Could I ask you when it was adopted?
2021, December.
And I think really the question would be, we need to make sure we're covering our costs too with the donation. And what, you know, it's not, not as simple as purchasing and planting.
Right.
It's maybe that first year or so of maintenance and making sure it's going to live.
If we hire a contractor to plant the tree and ask the tree for them to plant it, depending on the species of the tree, it could be between $350 and $400.
Okay, so that's just the tree and the planting?
That's just the tree and the planting. And then us watering it every day for a couple of weeks and all the maintenance that goes along with thereafter, which the tree is not.
Nonetheless, it's, okay.
Yeah, and I'm just making sure that everybody is good with this before I pass it along to prospective.
Yeah.
Well, how do you feel about the $450?
I mean, should we add in something more to just cover those initial costs of DPW?
We can.
Should it be $550?
Kind of the gift that keeps on giving, I guess. It's a tree, you know, it's going to grow, it's adding to the canopy, so.
Oh, it's a thing for our village.
As, you know, a gift overall. The cost, it could be fine, it could be more.
Okay, we're going to try to come up with a number that could be realistic to tell people, when they want to donate a tree, it's going to cost.
What do you think?
$600? Is it $150 just to water a little bit through the year, get it going?
For the next 30 years, we might spend another 40 hours on it, so if you want to put $600 for a donation.
But I mean, just so we're really covering the logistics of what that takes.
You said 40 hours for a tree.
For the course of 30 years, you know, trimming it.
Yeah, okay, so adjusted for pricing and everything else, I mean, it should be at least $750?
There we go. Do I hear eight? Oh, I have a comment, but we're just revisiting this to make sure we're covering the costs. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you requested it earlier.
So permanent record, right? Can we amend that to be, uh, a permanent record, um, for ones that's feasible? I mean, like, what happens when the tree dies? Are we gonna keep?
Do we replace it?
Like, do we replace it? Do we have to keep the plaque?
That's a really good point.
How long, how long does the tree have to live for?
Because this is, we went through this with benches. Otherwise, you're just constantly preparing for like 30 years of benches. You've, you've gone so far past.
Right.
Any realistic cost.
So what if it's so long?
Yeah.
What if it's for the extended, uh, tree's natural life?
Mm-hmm.
Um, no less than five years.
Oh, interesting.
That way, if the tree dies in natural causes.
Five years.
For the tree, I like the idea for the tree's natural life, to be honest with you.
Right.
Yeah.
But no less than five years, just in case something happens, we can replace it and we put it somewhere else. So let's say we put a tree in a corner and then we.
Or an act of God.
Yeah, strike by lightning, but it happens in three years' time. We'll take it upon ourselves to replace that tree and put another one up and keep the plaque there for that tree, right?
Right.
So long as it's a, I, I, I think something like that is better than.
Yeah.
Permanent.
Yeah, I'd share. Five years. I, I like that.
Does that cost include the plaque?
No, plaque's separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Plaque is separate, I think. Or we load it in, you know, this is what it is without a plaque, this is what it is with a plaque. You know, you want a plaque, it's another $100 or whatever.
I kind of leave the space blank, because the cost of a plaque's gonna change.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, not everyone's gonna want a plaque.
Leave the plaque by the tree. What I'm envisioning is a nice metal, maybe it's copper or brass on the post.
They have, they get the plaque, they have.
Can I, can I add, can I say the plaque would be dependent on?
Right, if you want it.
Oh, because we want it to be consistent throughout the village.
I don't want consistent, yeah.
And I think we have to charge enough for the.
I think this is where we got hung up before, was the plaque designed.
Okay, so let's sort that and.
Don't age HPV.
But hang on, hang on, you know, I mean, a lot of municipalities do this, and it's really, you want a plaque, this is our plaque.
That's right.
This is our design.
Yep.
What would you like on it? Well, you know, and that's, that's how it happens. I mean, everywhere I've lived, I've done that when I donated stuff.
I agree.
Hundred percent agree.
I think he said it depended upon the design that was chosen, because there were, there were some that mounted in the ground, and then there were some that were, went around the tree like a, like a band with a little, like a chain with a little thing on it. So it depends on what design.
Just pick one thing, I think.
Just pick one and that's, there you go.
Just take one and that would be our.
That's what Highland Park does, you know.
Zach, can you come back to us with some, uh, tree stake designs? I think it's, you want it just staked in the ground, and then as the tree grows, you can.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
I would say, uh, the stake is probably not a good idea, because I think the, the conversation turned into, well, it's trampled, stepped on, blown, hit by a plow, hit by snow, destroying some fashion, so it'd be more prone to damage on the ground. Um, then it came back around to hanging something on the tree while it could then grow into the tree or cause damage to the tree by whatever materials hanging from. Um, I prefer the hanger, and that's what we have on a tree down on State Place.
And that works.
All right. So I'm gonna take a picture of that, that plaque, and that setup, and I'll bring it back to the board and let you guys decide.
And I will say that, um, and they, again, they do this at Highland Park, um, if they have a hanging around the tree, when they see the tree's growing, they enlarge the hanger.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's solvable. You just have to kind of, you know, because you're.
Keep an eye on it.
Yeah, you're maintaining your canopy.
Which, that kind of goes along with us taking the diameter, brass height of every tree, hopefully every year, every other year to kind of keep an eye on what's going on.
Sure.
So that'll be, uh, a good opportunity for us to take those assessments.
Okay, so that'll be an action item then, maybe, you know, just come back and show the board what it would look like to have the hanging plaque and what the design and maybe a couple of.
Should it be on the next agenda with the amendments to, uh, uh, one thing with the language that was proposed and cost associated with the cost of the plaque and that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So why don't we do that? Put it on the next agenda. Bring it right back.
We're talking about July 6.
Yeah, I'm talking July 6.
Yeah, Lily, is Lisa done with her question?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The mounts and the speed monitor that I had.
Yes.
I am going to request of the board to consider removing the mounts from Bowlin Avenue, which has two speed hubs and is not a main artery, and returning the mounts to State Street, which is a main artery and does not have any speed hubs. That is my proposal to the board.
There is one mount, just to be clear on that.
Okay.
So one mount, it would have to be fixed in place in one location on State.
Okay. And how much of the mounts?
Uh, I got a price mark, it can't be more than 100 hours.
Yeah, you're not, you're not.
Yeah, so I don't think it'd be much to get a couple more mounts.
Okay.
It would just be the time duration. So now you're looking at a three-week interval between, you know.
We don't put, I'm proposing is that we don't have it on Bowlin. They sound has two speed hubs and it's a side street. State Street being the main artery and has no speed hubs, and they have no speed monitors. They used to, and now they don't anymore.
Yeah, it was taken down because of the DOT project. Um, they're technically not supposed to be there without a DOT.
I was just gonna ask that.
Yeah.
Do we just circle back with him and say we're gonna?
It's a natural forgiveness.
Oh, God, it's like, and then gonna go through the bench and the plantings and another picture?
No, for us to mount anything permanently in place on, uh, DOT right away, it would have to be to their standard, which is, uh, pretty comprehensive and expensive. So this, for a couple hundred dollars, we can.
Okay, so just.
Yeah, decided then, and I think we've had them out on Jefferson for years.
I know. Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
And State.
I think it was just because the focus of the project coming along and them having to change signs out was then in their way and.
I'll climb with that. So we could have that.
Sure, I'll climb with that. Why not? I mean, State Street really has always had issues.
Calling the board.
I mean, I know that the Bowlin residents though asked those.
Yeah, that was important.
That was important to something, you know. So I don't know. Um, do we get a other more humps?
What if we just move them back and forth every now and then until residents say, hey, what happened, right?
I guess we could try that.
I mean, that's kind of how it was and has been.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one on the rotation, so every other week, uh, they're in, they're back to the same location.
We just planned on one.
So we have two speed monitors, or, yeah, two speed monitors, um, and adding, you know, two more, um, moving places, locations, that's just gonna, for their rotation for another week or two, depending, you know, if we keep the, the Bowlin.
Yeah, better than nothing, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it is.
Give it a shot.
Okay.
All right, what else? One more? Yes, oh, Lily has one. Um, the garbage can replacements.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've, I've been preoccupied with one the other.
Okay.
I'm looking at it, um, in the background, I know that they have problems.
Okay. Um, the speed monitor, okay, garbage replacement. I think that was it.
Okay, no, thank you. This is great.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll leave it. So, um, talking to the town, the town's going forward with their chip sealing starting, uh, 24th of this month. I was anticipating more towards the end of summer, so that's why the garbage cans have been, you know, kind of put to the side for the time being. Um, once we're caught up with that, then we have to start doing a lot of patchwork to get the painting done. Um, seems like the, the summer's already scheduled.
But at least if we can get something ordered.
Yeah.
You know, like, if you look at the, at the placement and, and the.
Make sure the pedestal is in a.
Right, the pedestal, something that's, you know, because right now they look really bad.
No, I don't.
Just, you know, nothing fancy, just something.
But it's tough sometimes with the, you know, with the town, because, um, there's schedule changes, and then they let you know, hey, we're gonna do the chip seal, and you're like, wow, okay.
Yeah.
You know, because you have to feed the, yeah. So, you know, it's a little fluid sometimes on your end, so I, I think we understand that.
I agree.
Yeah. Anything else for Zach?
He's got one.
Yeah.
Do you have your other request?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, uh, so per the, um, banner application, it says that it's pending, uh, on the board's approval. It's the monorailmentation. It's the same banner that goes up every year, it's a different date.
Yeah.
And so I just need approval from you guys, because I must be able to hang a banner.
Your motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Trustee Leikert?
Aye.
Trustee Lambeer?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Back call.
Um, not a back call. Case loader, and I tried.
I got a break once.
So this is, yeah, um, based on our replacement schedule for vehicles and equipment, and also it was discussed improvements in the capital improvement plan, um, replacement of our existing, like, 2017 K321 up front wheel loader. Um, so the lease is one of the different options. Hopefully you guys have a chance to review it. It was all last minute, I've been working with the salesman from Monro Tractor for like a month and a half, trying to get everything in mind. It came out. Did an assessment on the, our existing loader, um, came back showing a $4,500 part that needed to be replaced. Didn't make sense to me, so I went back and forth with them, trying to figure out why that was on there. Obviously, it's hard to us, didn't indicate needing to be replaced. Um, then found out it was an error on their cable. So now everything's backed up, and it was last minute, so I was able to get it to you guys yesterday. Right? Or today.
Today.
It was today.
You have that?
Oh, yeah, I have that.
Yes.
So, um, the trade-in, um, is $35,000 for, uh, for our existing, uh, loader. Um, the lease, it's, or the, the purchase of the, the new one is based on the OGS contract as stated, um, and it's competitive bid pricing, so we're, we're covered there. Um, and the lease financing is what it is. Whether you guys wanted to go with a monthly payment, quarterly, or an annual payment.
Yeah, but you looked at this too, yeah.
Right, no, the, when we did the multi-year plan, we put yearly, and it's usually cheaper to do a yearly payment. It makes more sense. I remember mine, we pay bills for once. When they come in, I hate any monthly bills. It knows it makes sense worse to do that. We can do the yearly. And we budgeted in the multi-year plan for the purchase with the lease in, was 1707, so the pain within is $15,000, you know, $96 with the trade-in, so.
About $2,000 below what we had.
Right, but we added the payment for next year, which this would fall nicely where we anticipated in the multi-year plan with the financing and the debt.
So it notes out?
Yep.
So this is, uh, so the first payment would fall in this year's budget?
No, next year's, because the trade-in contribution.
Yeah, the trade-in, the loader contribution.
Okay. Do we have, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Do we have this same cost in the long-term capital plan in the fourth year? Because this is a three-month lease, right?
Three year.
Three year, I'm sorry. Three years.
Yes.
And in the fourth year, we just have that cost getting carried through the entire.
Yeah, because we looked at, we were renewing and looking at another lease because of the type of requirement.
So every year, we've got that in and just carries forward specific to this caseload. So this is pretty much exactly in line with the plan. I see no reason to deny. Yeah, no, I wanted to say thank you as well for, um, making sure that we had that information. I, I think it instills confidence and trust in the board and in the public too, that we've got that in place. We're following it, so that's what we should be doing.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I like everything being streamlined, so that's helpful.
Okay, so, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the, uh, the purchase of the new caseload as presented with the annual payments.
Lease, the lease or?
As a lease.
The lease.
With the trade-in.
With the trade-in.
We had to hear, heard to hear from.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Co.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Leikert.
Aye.
Trustee Lambeer.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, you got a new one.
Zach, how was that?
Well, so the next two are gonna be bigger than this one, uh, the, you know, which I was talking to Dorothy earlier about. And it's, it's gonna be somewhere between 12 to 18 months to take delivery of, uh, a big dump truck that I ordered, um, and getting that dialed in, so the bit is specific to what we're looking for in the face of time. Um, so hopefully by October, I'll have something in mind to be able to present to you guys. The one-time pickup, um, will probably be replaced. Uh, instead of that, it'll be the truck three, which is the smaller pickup, if you will, um, which is cheaper. Um, but I think that one needs to be replaced before the one-time dump truck, so, um, it might deviate away from this capital improvement plan just a little bit.
Well, Zach, um, maybe make a proposal, maybe discuss at the next meeting, you know, circulate around what you think that would look like and kind of start reviewing that. And if I could, just, um, this speaks to having a long-term capital plan in place. We've got certain allocation to, uh, vehicles, and they might be a little different. So in order to deviate with a different vehicle than what's on the long-term capital plan, um, provided that it was specifically aligned out of the reference, uh, we would just simply need to make that motion to update the long-term capital plan to reflect what you're suggesting we purchase instead, and just push things around.
Yeah, because the money's for a vehicle.
So, so I guess the, the action there would be for Zach perhaps to work with Dorothy to, um, put together the proposed change, both in the maintenance schedule and the capital plan, and then the board can review it.
Yeah, well, there's probably price out both vehicles, just to make sure that what is, um, priced out for the, the capital improvement plan is in line with what the cost of these vehicles are actually going to be. So, yeah, once I'm a little more prepared for this one, I'll just.
Let's get, let's see.
That's great. What else?
Um, is there everything on that list? Um, is there anything on that list?
Yeah, I think the board already talked to the planning section for corners, we addressed the bench, and we touched on the garbage. So I think we nailed everything on your list.
Okay, um, yeah, that's, that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you, and I've gotten so many compliments on how beautiful the village was.
Glad to hear that.
Always.
Yes, we're out all day today, raining.
Unbelievable, I mean.
Yeah, so, trying to, uh.
At least you don't have to walk, huh?
We still have to.
We have to.
We're still out there, every morning, two and a half hours, because the flowers grow in so tight that water just sheds off, and it doesn't actually soak in the baskets.
Yeah.
So between that and having to fertilize, we're still out there.
Okay. No matter what.
We're crazy people, why are we gonna hide that? It's for a good reason.
Well, everything looks really good, and you've heard so many compliments, so thank you.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, uh, next up, treasurer.
Hey, um, the bill pay, is there any questions really with the bill pay? We have two, one for last year's budget, and one for the new year's budget. Um, I do anticipate another bill pay for last year's budget, as we get the final ones in, as they come in, so I'm hoping the next bill pay for that will be the last. So is there any questions with what's been presented with the two abstracts?
Is there a motion?
Big motion to approve the bill pays as presented.
My second, Volco.
Trustee Laitke?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Laitken?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. General Code, once a year, I do the update to the actual code for all the local laws and things that were done, as you can see, we have quite a bit. The estimate, they always give me an estimate, um.
It is what it is.
There is what it is, you.
Make a motion to approve the bill pay for the joint updates as we've already passed these laws, and they need to be updated accordingly.
How far are we above what we budgeted?
We budgeted about $5,000 every year, somewhere around there.
Yeah.
And we won't be doing it again until next year about this time, unless there's a huge addition, and I can't predict that, you know, this has been standing pretty consistent.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Volco, please.
Okay, Trustee Laitke?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Laitken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Board already took care of the meeting date change.
Yep.
And the final thing I had is something that popped up that, I didn't want to pop up, but it did. We've been having problems with our current monitoring system, company, for.
Security.
For security, um, and there's, was concerns, and it was enough that Doyle covers the DPW currently. And spoke to them, had them come in, check everything out, they can take us on, and one thing we discovered is our firebox panel is, we can't put a date on it. And there's high concerns, and knowing that we have had a fire, the recommendation is that it be replaced, I'm gonna guess it's over 20 years old. So, the cost of replacement and having them monitor, and the nice thing with our monitoring that we currently are not getting is annual inspections of the system, testing of the fire system, that is provided with their services, so we're getting more services and we're updating the panel. I couldn't put it in the multi-year plan because I never realized.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't.
It never even crossed my mind until the gentleman came in, and his recommendation is to replace that.
And what's the total amount?
It's gonna be $3,150 to go ahead and replace the panel, get everything up, is adding an additional panic button, that we didn't have in place that we should. And then we go to the monthly monitoring, which we're currently doing anyway, with the current service provider, we would just be canceling that contract. And they're aware of those problems.
Okay, yeah, Lily, what does the antenna look like? It mentioned an exterior antenna.
It's just a small thing, it's part of the transmission.
It's tiny.
It's tiny.
So they mounted it on the.
Yeah, it's on the.
So the, the current panel works, or it doesn't work?
It works, but they won't guarantee it, and I wouldn't, it's too ancient trying to hook it up.
I think they would also have an issue with, uh, that equipment communicating with the equipment.
It's old technology, I think, is what they, they're concerned that it's very old technology.
Yeah, because.
Because I mean, these things can't last for quite a long time, but I imagine it'd be compatible with theirs, so, that works, so.
I just think it's better for the safety.
Well, I mean, for $3,000, we have something that's.
Right, it's not a huge hit, we can cover it, we, we put it under the legislation.
And it consolidates everything that's linked to.
Yeah, the monthly cost is about the same?
About the same.
Yeah.
So it's really just a $3,000 cost?
It's a $3,000.
Take a motion to approve as presented.
My second, Volco, please.
Trustee Laitke?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Laitken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Anything quirk-wise?
Quirk-wise, um, we're in our process of doing our year-end, I'll bring the report up to date on that, the annual financial report, it's been changed from the annual update document. So we're now, instead of the AUD, that used to be called, it's now the AFR. Um, we're just processing, starting, I started bank wrecking, I can't tell you where we're at. Um, I'm hoping we still have surplus, and I'm thinking we will, until I run the final numbers, get the last of the bills in. So hopefully I'll have a better idea as we get towards the next meeting.
And then this is the report that's filed with Albany?
Yes, this report has been filed with Albany by July 31st. Um, we did file last year in July 31st.
And that would have been a surplus in addition to the allocated capital.
For the reserves, and that's what I'm hoping to have a surplus, so we can allocate to the reserves and how much we get paid to that. I would like to be over that.
Right, okay, so the reserve, the reserve amount's already there, now it's just a question of whether or not we have more.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we'll see, don't hold me against it.
And then also, uh, let's see, you submitted the CLG.
Oh, yes, the CLG report was filed successfully, they, Alexandria got it in, they grilled, everybody's handling it, that's done, so we're current in all those things.
Okay, that's great, okay, uh, let's see, any member items?
I have one. Um, so I'd like to just bring this to the board's discussion, um, currently our HPB has two out of five members that are holdover status, and that's going on to the second year. We worked with them in holdover all year last year, and I'm just wondering, like, can we do something to expedite the process of maybe soliciting members from the, the village to step up and serve? Can we get a, um, a report as to anybody who has sent in applications, I mean, I just think it. We would, I would really like to get our holdovers out and our boards set, not wait for a whole nother year.
Why don't you do another posting on, you know, just in sure.
I can post on, I can post on Facebook, I can, we can do, um, obviously our website, uh, we can, if the mayor wants to put up a posting, a constant contact, you can do that. I would say that the board is up to date on anything we receive, because it's automatically forwarded to you, so there's nothing, I can only give you what I get.
Sure, yeah, that's how it works.
We just don't, they're not applying.
Yeah, well, that would be all right if we could do that, and then, I don't know, how, how often do you send out a newsletter?
The bulletins?
Yeah, the bulletins. One's a one? Very one.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there's probably only about a dozen more.
So maybe have a little tag at the, at the bottom, like, please, if you want to serve, you know, just to kind of.
Yeah, that's what we were just talking about.
That's the stuff we were just talking about, that's, that's what she's bringing up, the bulletin, yes.
Regarding the comment about the holdovers, um, I want to point out that there were two holdovers, if my, if my memory is correct, because they had not completed the training, so once they complete the training, then we would reconsider them, at least I would certainly reconsider. One of them was Susan Loda, uh, who was, I think, Justin Bolistra was held over because he, uh, he had training and, and, and Susan Loda, who was nominated, did not, but if she fulfilled that, that, then that she could be reconsidered.
Yes, I recall that, in the.
So, so that was one.
And I think Alexandria is following up with all the board members on the training and making, you know.
Was Jared Cook?
Mm-hmm, yep.
You're right, Jared Cook was also a holdover.
Yep.
Until such time as he, um, got his training, and then it also would be considered.
Yep.
So what I'm talking about is the HPB, because currently we have Virginia Cyril and both, and Jeff Pollak, that are in holdover positions.
Okay.
So I would like to just kind of accentuate the process, or expedite the process of doing those stuff.
Great, thank you for the clarification. Okay, any other member items?
Do you have one as well?
Yeah, sure.
Um, so we've had quite a few meetings on, uh, short-term rentals right now, and I, I guess naturally, I was personally, I'm kind of skeptical that, um, more meetings will, will solve, uh, a lot of the problems that we have in general. You know, I, I think there is a, a good case for public input, but geez, if they haven't seen us in the past 14 meetings talking about STRs, I don't know when they are gonna pick up, that, that, that's the process. So I'm, I'm wondering if instead of scheduling more sessions, there's a way that we can put our heads together, you know, either string it along with member items, or, you know, short agenda items. Um, personally, what I would do is that, it sounds like our, our board, uh, based on our discussions, wants something that's simple and restrictive. Maybe we can make it even simpler by being a little more restrictive to start, um, and, and perhaps expedite some things to get something really concrete in front of the public. So as I was just, uh, brainstorming, um, before this meeting, what I was thinking is, uh, you know, perhaps something where, um, hosted onsite for single family is allowed by a special permit reviewed by the village board. I think, you know, that is a, a very minor use case where you're basically renting out the bed. Uh, and unhosted, we talked about upstairs in, uh, in dwelling units on the upper floor in M U B C.
Would you be able to send that out to the board?
Yeah.
Okay, because I know we're all scribbling, and I'm like, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send it out to you, but, you know, basically, it's, it's these, uh, these two sections, so, um, uh, unhosted, uh, both of these things would be by special permit, um, host onsite, or unhosted upstairs in dwelling units in M U B C and T V E, a hundred feet away from our essential structure. And, you know, we've talked a lot about, a lot of the deliberation has been about, um, uh, snowbird cases, or, you know, how, how long somebody could, uh, rent out when they're not there. I just wouldn't really allow that to, to circumvent that discussion, and with something in place that's even more restrictive, even simpler, ship it and, and adapt later.
Okay, thank you, but if you can send it to the board, also to Dorothea as well, and Jeff?
Yep, any other thoughts on that, or I, I.
I don't have anything to say, we never like to.
Um, any thoughts in general on the, on the, um, idea of something simpler, restrictive, that we just kind of toss around and then bring in front of the public?
I guess my first thought is, is I don't, I don't necessarily mind having some dials, but starting out more restrictive rather than less is probably where I err. Uh, but if we can get done something with a little bit of flexibility, I'm just, I'm hesitant on special permits. Um, I'm afraid that it creates a degree of permanency, I don't want any permanency. Um, I'd rather just have the availability of either hosted onsite or unhosted, be either permitted or not permitted, and if permitted, limited to the number of days. So, so rather than deal with a special permit, if they're over 30 days, they gotta go get a rental permit, right? And then if we don't like having hosted onsite, rather than going through special permitting with permanency, just say 90 days max, or, you know, hosted onsite 90 days, unhosted, um, owner occupied, like, however you want to do it. If you just want to have unhosted, it doesn't matter whether or not you're a resident or not, and you want a restricted, then I think we, we can do that. But I don't mind a little bit of flexibility with a little bit of dials, and as long as we're working on this, right? We can put in a moratorium, and we can just keep going to have it be as restrictive as we all agree, because here's what I'm afraid of. We go in and make it super restrictive at the start, and maybe there's a degree of flexibility that we're comfortable with. Perhaps there's three of us on this board that don't want any short-term rentals, and we just come in hard and say, we don't want any, and that's okay too. But I don't mind having a little bit of discussion for some flexibility. But, but I, I'm definitely not in favor of unhosted, non-owner occupied and residential management, we all agree to that.
Right.
So what we could do instead is limit what we don't want. And then go from there and limit more if we want less.
I'm very interested in having a hard time, or, you know, so that I can sit down, point by, by point.
Prepared to discuss it.
Yeah.
And, and.
I'd rather have it with public, you know, with public, I'd like to have our, our workshop at 6:30, I think that we would probably get more people. I, I, I just, you know, we already talked about that the other night.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Did you schedule it?
Yeah.
Did you schedule one yet?
Alexandria is gonna be reaching out to you guys, you know, she had a pretty busy day, so.
That's, that's fine, I, I will circulate this around, if anybody else has concrete ideas that are simple and restrictive, go for it, and, and maybe we can circumvent some of the meetings and just come to the table with something that is a matter of everyone.
Consolidating classes did seem to make some sense towards the tail end of our last discussion, so.
Okay.
I got a few member items.
No, you got, you're done, okay, yes.
Thank you, uh, so this is just a quick state, uh, quick question. The waste station that's down part of the old barns on Sheen Place.
A roof.
The waste station, the, the little white building?
Yeah.
Okay, if that property owner chose to, for some limited amount of time, perhaps only in the summer, rent it out to a taco business, or somebody who might provide some unique, different food, that would be entirely possible in the current code that we have, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Who owns that?
I'm just throwing out an idea to anybody out there, that'd be awesome.
You could do it because of the condition of the building, right, yeah.
But it could be improved, I mean, the building should be in, is the building in.
It is a legal use in the zone.
It is a legal use of the zone, and the building is currently preserved well enough to be.
Safe.
Safe.
I don't know, I've never been inside that one.
Looks pretty rough. Yeah, it looks.
We don't, we don't have, we don't even have that information.
Right.
We just don't, I think. Any discussion right now would be speculation and tie us up, so we have no information, it's a.
Well, it's a good idea.
I know.
I'm just throwing an idea, how awesome, the tacos they're doing right there.
It's lovely. Wouldn't it be a satellite?
Anyway, all right, so that was very, very cool.
No tacos, I support the tacos.
I do like the tacos.
Are we all set with the debt for the road, is everything good there, we don't need to do anything?
Um, I'm waiting on, we're getting closer on the bid docs, and once the bid docs get going, then I'll be working with Brene Donigan to issue, so that's, we're, we're in track.
Thanks, um, we had a great conversation with, uh, the Clean Energy, Solar Power, today. I figure we should at some point entertain maybe the conversation with Chris Carter, was it?
Oh, Chris Cat.
Chris Cat at Siemens, because it's possible they may have some unique ideas for improvement of infrastructure, right? That, then they could present to us, that, that we can turn around and present it back to Nicerda and the others that require improvements in order to get potentially.
So should we arrange to just, you know, make contact with them? I mean, I'm, I'm for that, I mean, I think, you know, he's, he responded to the RFP, the, their company.
It was a very, he, he was a very reasonable, thoughtful, I thought it had some unique considerations. We don't have to move forward with anything that they may present, it's just, hey, look, you could do this, and this is what you could save over time, and it might be in line with the idea of trying to get cheaper power.
Yeah, and, and I know the town has just entered into a contract with, with Siemens.
With Siemens.
Yeah, yeah, and they're, they're pretty excited about it, they're, they're going to the next level on their climate smart.
Do you want him to come in in July, or you want me to shift it to August?
May, August.
After short-term.
The other thing I'd like to make sure we pass everything to Robert or something.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's our coordinator for.
I, I want to make sure whatever we do, we get credit for.
Yeah, he knows Chris Cat, they know each other, yeah, so that's, that's, that's also a good thing too, if that we do something with.
So maybe, maybe after short-term rentals, or whatever that is.
Well, then I'll keep.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
And we can, we can just let him know that we'd like to have him back later in the summer or something, just so it's sort of queued up. Yeah.
So I have.
Okay, um, my only member item is, we had, um, a D-Day commemoration, um, which was just great, it really was, then the, the town put it together very quickly with, um, oh, who's the foreman, Matt Rickett?
Yes.
Who is with the, the Gates Backpipe and Pipe and Drum, or something.
I don't know the name of the.
Yeah, but it was, it was just nice, and we had, yeah, you guys were there, and it was just good turnout, so it was, it was just, it was good. And the, and the Legion was, they were invited as guests, so they didn't have to do anything, so that was good, yeah.
Well, I had one thing, um, the, uh, this weekend, there is a parade, um, so I think.
The gay pride parade is this weekend.
That is what, Saturday?
Saturday, Saturday, I think.
Yes, it starts at 1:00, goes from the Red Center to the Port of.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, just to let you guys know, we, uh, I will have someone, um, blocking traffic for the parade.
That was real close.
Lincoln and Sutherland, and Washington and Lincoln.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's good, all right, I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we have minutes.
Minutes.
Oh, we have minutes, I was so close.
You can go.
Thank you.
Yeah, there we go, thank you guys, thanks so much.
Thank you.
We do have minutes, you're right, because we didn't do them last, and, and Saturday is.
So she used the word gentleman, I assume I'm not included.
Now, you can stay for these minutes.
I don't know.
Obviously, it's hard to stay because we got an executive.
Don't first, that's.
Okay, let's go, March 26th.
Didn't have any problem with them. Make a motion to approve.
Volco?
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Laitke?
Aye.
Trustee Laitke?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.